In Jesus's name, please say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, we welcome you to today's Board of Commissioners meeting, and it is now hereby called to order. At this time, are there any revisions to the published agenda? Hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? The agenda is unanimously approved. We now welcome our very first resolution today, and it's from, it's actually, it's a presentation on the Henry County Walk to End Alzheimer's. And we welcome up Snapper Freeman, Walk Manager, and with the Alzheimer's Association for the Georgia Chapter. So at this time, will you please come, and we appreciate you this morning, for ten minutes? Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you very much for having us. I do have some folders. Can I go ahead and pass those out to everyone? Excellent, thank you.
If you could get them to us.
All right, good morning to everyone. As you can see, I have my wonderful committee here with me.
Welcome.
So we thank you very much for taking us, for giving us your time this morning. We hope this will be very short, sweet, and to the point. So the Walk to End Alzheimer's is the world's largest fundraiser to support care, support, and research in the world. Okay? We have a walk here in Henry County supporting that. Okay? A lot of people may ask, why support the Walk to End Alzheimer's? You have walks that support everything in the world nowadays. I will give you three reasons. The first reason, the cost that it takes to care for this disease outweighs what Apple does in sales per year. In 2018, Apple generated $256.6 billion in revenue. In 2019, it is estimated that it will cost $290 billion to care for this disease. Okay? Reason two, there are no cures for this disease. Okay? It is imperative that we find a cure. Okay? Everything that we put towards research, we must find a cure for this disease one day. The association is actually the world's largest fundraiser, or the largest funder, I'm sorry, behind the US and the Chinese governments in putting money towards care, support, and research for the disease. Reason three, we are still looking for our first survivor. Every disease or cancer, they can give you the statistics of how many survivors they have. At every single walk, we take a single white flower, and that is to symbolize our first survivor. We hope that you will support our walk. We are asking everyone in the community to support. This is a walk that we are looking to grow. We are in our second year, and we need your help. Here I have Ms. Sylvia Dennis Ray, and I know she would like to say a few words on behalf of the Walk. She is our Walk Chair, and she is the reason that there is a Walk in Henry County. Ms. Sylvia?
Thank you. I'm just asking everyone to please support us. This disease affected my family in 2002, and I care for my mom who has dementia. I also lead up support groups, and I just put my all into this. Because like Snapper said, we're looking for that first survivor. Thank you.
Real quick, the folders that you have, I'll just run through the information that you'll have in there. You have the 1-800 line, this is our support number. This is 24/7. Anybody who has anything that they want to talk about, any questions, anything at all, this number is available 24/7 to everyone. You have information about the association. You also have the ten warning signs. There is information on the facts and figures on the disease, as well as information about the use of funds as to where our money goes when a donation is made. You also have a flyer about the Walk, which gives you the date, which is September 21st at Alexander Park. That is at the west entrance. Then you also have a sheet that tells you how you can actually get signed up for the Walk. I've also included the sponsorship packet. The sponsorship packet is in there just to give you information about the Walk. Okay? Anything else you'd like to say? No? Well, once again, we thank you very much, and we certainly hope that you will support the Walk to End Alzheimer's in Henry County.
Well, we thank you. And what time should walkers plan to arrive, on September 21st?
Registration actually opens at 8:00 AM. The ceremony starts at 9:00, at 9:00 AM, and then the Walk starts at 9:30 AM.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, well, we thank you all for coming, and we definitely did make a note, again, of the focus areas for Alzheimer's to definitely help raise funding for the care, to definitely help find the cure. And again, we're still seeking the first survivor. So again, thank you for coming today. And I understand we forgot a proclamation that we'll, we do want to present to you as well, for your seat. So if you could stand, and we'll allow the proclamation to be presented at this time.
Good morning, Chair and Board.
Good morning.
Like previously stated, we do have a proclamation in recognition of Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. It reads, "Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder that robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States with no known prevention of cure. And whereas, more than 5.8 million people in the United States are living with Alzheimer's disease, including 140,000 Georgians, with Georgia ranked in the top five states for projections of Alzheimer's prevalence in the next ten years. And whereas, volunteer caregivers bear an extraordinary burden in caring for loved ones. And in 2017, more than 16 million caregivers provided over 18.5 billion hours of unpaid care for those with Alzheimer's and other dementia-related diseases. In Georgia, nearly 533,000 family caregivers provided 607 million hours of unpaid care valued at $7.68 billion." And whereas, the Alzheimer's Association estimates the direct cost of caring for those with Alzheimer's disease to the United States in 2018 at $277 billion. And whereas, with awareness comes hope, and the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's disease and other dementias, thereby improving the quality of life for both patients and their caregivers. And whereas, the city of McDonough serves as the host location for the Henry County Walk to End Alzheimer's, and Henry County has a longstanding commitment to supporting the efforts in Alzheimer's awareness. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the month of June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and urges all residents to learn more about brain health and to wear purple throughout the month to help spread global awareness of the Alzheimer's Association's vision of a word without, of a world without Alzheimer's disease. On this fourth day of June, signed by Chair June Wood and attested by Stephanie Braun County Clerk.
Well, we thank you. And again, we appreciate you being here. We'll come down as a board and take a picture with you, and then board will remain, because we've got some employee recognitions to take pictures with as well. So if you will join me with the Alzheimer's team. So thank you again for being here.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Again, while you're standing there, we do have another opportunity for recognition of the photo off of you guys. But as we do in the first meeting of every month, we'd like to recognize the retirees for this past month or the coming month, and I'll call them, they could come forward. Lori Jones, Clerk 2, Henry County Police. Sheila R. Swanson, Renee Swanson, from Henry County Police Investigator. Shirley Sanders, Program Aid Senior Services. And Amy McCoa, Captain, Henry County Fire Department, Paramedic Instructor. I think Lori's the only one with us today. I would like to congratulate each one of these individuals for retiring the contribution they made to Henry County, to citizens, and the entire Team Henry for their dedication. And Lori, her 35 years of service is definitely appreciated. Have a lot of stories to tell, but we think we'll wait until later. I've known Lori for a long time, as she used to be in the fire, number one, and in police through her 35 years of employment here. But definitely, the contribution to Henry County has been huge, and they will be missed, all four of them.
We thank you, as we do commend each and every one of the award recipients, and appreciate their services to the county, and of course, the best in their retirement. So thank you again. We'll now move into our next item, which is a financial update by our Director of Finances, Mr. David Smith. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and the Henry County community. You have before you, for your review, is our April 13 financial report. Total revenues year-to-date of $152.6 million, or 92% of what our total budgeted revenue has been for the year. Our expenditures continue to trail those revenue collections, which is good for us. We're at $122.1 million, which is 74% of budgeted expenditures, where we actually should be around 83% of budgeted expenditures. Year-over-year and month-over-month, we're $300,000 worse in terms of our collections, but still performing very well. And that's primarily due to vacancies driving those positive variances. Our SPOSS expenditures for the month are significantly lower. They're running only at $800,000. Our next few slides are the financial numbers themselves. I pointed out, or highlighted, the $6.3 million down at the bottom, where it's showing where we continue to use, over the next several months, we continue to use our cash balance to fund our ongoing expenditures, as we've collected the majority of our revenues in the November month. This is a graphical representation of where we stand year-to-date against the budget. Month-over-month in the prior year, you see what our performance is, where we're trending a little bit better for this time. And this is the graphical representation showing where the negative variance is year-over-year. For our fund balance presentation, our year-to-date activity shows us having a positive net income, but that's primarily because of revenue received in the earlier months. That's the November, December timeframe. The estimated fund balance before restrictions, and then our restriction of 25% of our amended fund, of amended, not fund balance number, but our amended budget for fiscal year 19, estimating our fund balance for April of 19 at $60 million. Onto our SPOSS collections, where you see we've collected approximately $10 million. Our expenditures continue to trail. This is a graphical representation of where we stand with SPOSS. The orange line is the revenue number, the blue line being the budget, where you see us trending better in terms of revenue over the budget. What questions do you have?
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Mine is, I'm just glad to see the reports, and they're getting more detailed, so I appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. So we're now moving to our consent agenda. And we have only one item on the consent agenda, and it is a resolution from Financial Services, which is approving a reimbursement of $37,983 to the facilities maintenance budget from revenue funds received from FEMA and ACCG to cover damage in regards to Hurricane Irma. Do make a note that it is in the reimbursement amount of $37,983. Does anyone wish to have this item removed from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, the motion is now open, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chair, may I interrupt briefly?
Sure.
The reimbursement amount should be $42,333. Does your resolution say $37?
Yeah, for some, for some reason, I was given a change just before the meeting, so I would love to get a clarification about that.
Okay, let me get a clarification first.
Okay.
Chair, what I do apologize, the amount should be $42,333.
Okay, well, okay, very good. Next time I get a change like that ahead of the meeting, I'll confirm with the county manager, because it did come through to the office that it was changed. So again, so let's restate the resolution again, from Financial Services. A resolution is to improve a reimbursement amount of $42,333 to the facilities maintenance budget from revenue funds received from FEMA and ACCG to cover damage in regards to Hurricane Irma. So any other discussions or comments or changes? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open to approve this consent agenda item.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or changes? All in favor? Okay, this item is approved by unanimous decision in the amount of $42,333. Okay, we'll now move into the next item, which is our resolution from the Police Department, and it's a resolution approving retirement of a Belgian Malinois canine from service from the Henry County Police Department. So here to hear that resolution. Good morning.
Good. As you know, Henry County Police Department has successfully used Belgian Malinois canines for patrol and to detect dangerous drugs within the community. The usefulness of canines is dependent on the effectiveness and reliability of the dog to detect drugs. One canine, which is the one we're here for, Sam, is now low over nine years old. He's been with Henry County Police Department for five years, actually low over five years, and has become medically impaired to the point where it's diminishing his service abilities. Therefore, the Police Department is requesting to retire him. April 18th, Officer Dillard took Sam to the veterinary clinic that we use. They diagnosed him with, I believe it was spinal spondylosis and one other thing, which, yeah, arthritis in his back and his hips, which basically affects his, the way he does everything. So it's our request that he be retired, and then at that point leased to Officer Dillard for his remainder.
Oh, thank you. I'm Sergeant Torbush. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Comment, we do want to thank Sam for his service to our community as a canine, and definitely wish the very best for him as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we've heard the presentation. The floor is now open for a motion to retire as presented.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The resolution has been approved unanimously. We're now moving to the next Police Department resolution, and we'll invite up Major Vance Rosen to make the presentation for a resolution approving the contract between 10-8 Forensic Services and Henry County regarding blood draws for DUI suspects.
Good morning, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Good morning.
Henry County Police Department requests approval of a contract with 10-8 Forensic Services Incorporated. A February 2019 Georgia Supreme Court ruling changed procedures for a DUI case. The ruling has two immediate impacts on Henry County law enforcement by limiting admissibility into evidence of a suspect's refusal to submit to a breath test. This prosecutorial limitation did not extend to obtaining blood samples for testing. In light of this ruling, the primary practice for obtaining the blood alcohol content on DUI suspects is now blood draws. There's currently one reliable location where a blood draw can be obtained in the county, that being Piedmont Henry Medical Center. Henry County Police Department's five-year average for DUI arrests is 525 per year. These numbers did not all consent to blood or breath urine testing. The Police Department historically has taken DUI suspects to Piedmont Henry Medical Center for blood draws. Recently, a policy change there now requires a suspect to be admitted as a patient for the procedure at a potential cost to the county of up to $341, not including lab costs. In searching for a cost-effective solution to this problem, 10-8 Forensic Services Incorporated was found to be a sole-source provider. 10-8 Forensic Services, Inc. staffs phlebotomists, who will respond to an officer in the field for a complete, to complete a blood draw on a suspect for a DUI case. The company will have staffing available 24 hours a day with a response time of 30 to 45 minutes. 10-8 Forensic Services has provided the following quotes in reference to contract services: $68 for a blood draw or a urine collection, $45 if the company is called out to the scene, and then eventually the suspect refuses the testing, and $75 for employee drug screening in the event that the county decided to use their services for that purpose. Henry County Police Department is asking the Board of Commissioners to approve this contract between 10-8 Forensic Services, Inc. and the Henry County Police Department.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Holmes?
Can a suspect refuse the blood draw?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what happens in that case?
So if a suspect refused the blood draw, we would be left, from a law enforcement standpoint, with two options. We could either go with the evidence that we have at our disposal at that point, or we can seek a search warrant issued by the judge in a court, and then we can compel them legally to provide the sample, but that happens from time to time.
Will the funds come out of seized funds, or is there a line item in the county's budget for this?
Yes, there is a line item in the budget preparing for this. This is also tied up to our next session with the judges about how they had to change our entire process with the new Supreme Court ruling that came down about six months ago. So this is part of their budget, Commissioner.
That's great, thank you.
Are there questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion. We have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second. Any discussions, comments? All in favor? The resolution as stated is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move into our next items regarding magistrate court, and we'll invite up Judge Martin Jones to present. Actually, we have three resolutions, and we'll begin with the first one, which is a resolution to approve the appointment of an additional associate magistrate judge, or judge is.
Judge is.
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Good morning. Obviously, this goes hand-in-hand with what you just voted on. This resolution will provide, I'm sorry, this resolution will provide for three new on-call judges, as we refer to them. We will, we plan to go to a seven-judge rotation to be on-call, which means that we'll have availability for law enforcement from 6:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night, which I think gets us more in line with the size of the county and where we should be as a court. We have all three of the proposed judges here today. I'd like to introduce you to them. Santana Flanagan is here. He would be one of the judges we're asking for approval. He is a resident of the county, longtime resident of the county, and also current attorney for the school board of Rockdale County. We have Sheila Tyler, who was born and raised in Henry County, went to law school with me. I like to call it the old one-room law school. We were the first class at Georgia State University Law School. She has aged a lot better than I have, but she's got wonderful experience, including several years with the US Attorney's Office. And then we have Maritza Ramos, present. She's had a long-time civil practice here in Henry County. All three of these proposed judges have the requisite seven years in to provide services for the Superior Court and State Court judges that asked for them. And again, this will allow us to go on this nightly rotation and provide what we believe will be probably, on average, two, possibly three blood draw search warrants per night, particularly when the police department or departments are active, because it's not just the 500-plus DUIs that will be asked to provide search warrants for that the county does, but also the local police departments as well. So I'd ask you all to, oh, one other thing. The Superior Court judge has signed an order yesterday approving all three of the judges. So upon y'all's approval, we can get them trained and get them in service July 1.
Thank you. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Okay, it is a unanimous resolution as stated. Thank you. All right, we'll now move into the next resolution, which is a resolution supporting the enactment of a technology fund for the magistrate court of Henry County. And again, we thank you, Judge Jones, for the presentation.
All right, we're seeking y'all's support for a local bill to be presented by Representative Almaty Holly and others who've agreed to sponsor this bill that would provide for a $5 add-on for dispository cases and civil cases filed in our court, which we project would provide us with $75,000 to $100,000 per year that we would then utilize for computer services, including updated audiovisual support in our courtrooms. Ultimately, we would like to have the ability to do remote hearings from our courthouse to the jail, which is what the state court is attempting to do. That would allow us to work in tandem with the state court and utilize the one courtroom that is available there, which to date, we've been the only court using it, but we're trying to get set up where, I get there at 6:00 in the morning. I don't know how long I'll be able to do that, but I'm trying. We're attempting to move our hearings forward in the morning as best we can so that we can have a time later in the morning for the state court to start utilizing their remote program. But ultimately, that's what we're looking for, and if, we would like y'all to pass a resolution in support of this bill and ask for lobbying assistance if the county has lobbyists at the next session of the General Assembly.
Thank you, Judge. Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? All in favor? The resolution as stated is approved unanimously. And then the next resolution, which is a resolution authorizing the digital storage of the court records of the magistrate court. Thank you again, Judge.
Thank you. Finally, we're asking for the board's support to allow us to get rid of some of our written records. We are not a court of record. We're the only court, other than the municipal courts in Henry County, that's not a court of record. By law, we're supposed to maintain our records for only 10 years, after which time they can be destroyed. However, those records don't have to be kept in written form. They can be kept electronically, as I've explained previously to the board. Judge Godwin and the clerks had enough foresight to go electronic well over 10 years ago. So we have all of our records stored electronically in PDF format already. We need authorization from the board to allow us to destroy the written records. And what we're asking for is to keep written records for only three years, after which we can destroy them. We want to keep all records electronically for 10 years, after which time they can be purged and deleted. And that's, and I provided the legal authority to Mr. Dogstetter, and I don't, I think he's had an opportunity to review it. It's not the most well-written code sections probably in the Georgia Code, but the spirit and I think letter of that law allows y'all to authorize us to do that, I think, to save space. And we're up to our ears in records. We have a considerable number of records in the trailer, for lack of a better term, behind the old state court building, all of which could be gotten rid of and utilized for the other courts, who probably need to keep their records much more badly than we do, so.
Well, thank you, Judge. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments regarding the resolution? Seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Okay, the resolution as stated has been approved unanimously. Thank you, Judge, and appreciate everything. Well, now moving to our next item regarding Stormwater, which is a resolution approving engineering services for the evaluation and design of dams, and we invite up Mr. Rocky Romero, our interim Stormwater Director. Romero, our interim stormwater director, for the presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members.
Good morning.
Resolution number 1938, authorizing and directing Henry County Stormwater Management Department to solicit proposal for engineering services to evaluate dams, was approved by the Henry County Board of Commissioners on February 5, 2019. The purchasing department issued a request of proposals, RFP number 19-31, for engineering services for the evaluation of and the design of dams. Five proposals were received and reviewed by a committee of Henry County staff and professionals. The review committee consisted of the chief planner of planning and zoning, transportation project director from SPLUS, engineer three from SPLUS, engineer three from DOT, and engineer two from stormwater. The committee reviewed all submitted proposals, and all proposals were scored and ranked. Snabble engineer was ranked the highest by the evaluation committee and provided the fees associated for the design of dams as follows. Lake Cindy Dam, $80,000. Lake Dow Dam, or Lake Dow Estates, $418,000. Lake Dow North Dam, $410,000. Swan Lake Dam, $405,000. For a grand total, $1,313,000 for all the design and inspection. Funding for engineering services is available in the stormwater budget. I will take any questions.
Okay, well, we've heard the presentation. Are there questions or comments? Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner Clemmons, I've got a comment, so Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, Rocky, there's been a lot of conversation with emails and stuff, with fellow commissioners and stuff about this, and to have more discussion. I know there's a lot of questions to be answered. But what I'm looking for is, are we gonna have an agreement with each one of these people or each one of these communities, is how they're gonna pay this money back?
And that's a good question, Commissioner. On the previous resolution back on February 5, we mentioned in the resolution there was three forms of funding this, and it was stormwater fees, special assessment of the stormwater fees in the drainage basin that serves the dam, or levy a property tax in a special-service district consisting of the properties directly impacted by the dam. At this point, we really don't have that in place, how we're gonna recoup the funds. But I think at the end of the day, it's for the communities that are servicing these dams to repay back stormwater for the work, design and also construction.
Okay, so what you're telling me is, is these communities will be responsible for repaying this money back?
If that's what the board, that's one of the things we mentioned previously, so if that's what the will of the board, that's what we'll have to do. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have right now. I might ask more questions.
Commissioner Clemmons.
And then I'll speak, then Commissioner Thomas.
I think my question is more for Patrick on the recoupment. I think that we're kind of putting the cart before the horse when we decide to vote to pay for something when we don't have the recoupment process in place first. And even if the board says, okay, you're gonna pay this back, wouldn't the community have to agree to it, Patrick, that they're, that they are willing to add that special tax on their properties? Or can we just assess everybody without their approval?
So, the Board of Commissioners does have the authority to create special tax districts and a special stormwater district to assess for this project or any other without, without the community's approval. You can do it that way. Whether you do or not will ultimately be up to this board. But yes, you, the county does have the authority to impose a tax or a fee without a community's consent.
Yeah, and I would say, I would think that that would be a disservice to the citizens because if you've got, you know, 1,200 homes in that community and only 300 really can afford to have more taxes put on them to pay for a dam, I don't think that we should spend money and then make someone pay for it without having their agreement or having a conversation with them, just like when we assess lights. If you're gonna add streetlights in a community, or speed bumps in a community, they go through and they have to get signatures. So I think, back again, we've gotta create policies that were protecting citizens and not enforcing extra burdens on citizens. So I think to vote on this today, or to vote for this, to spend out the money and say, oh, well, they're gonna pay the money back, it's not right. And so, that's my two cents, but I think the recoupment process needs to be in place prior so we know how it's gonna be paid back.
So, and if I could follow up with that, there is a little bit of a cart before the horse, whichever way we go, because, you know, where this came from largely was one neighborhood, one community that appears to want to pay the money back, but until we have some idea of how much money that's going to be, we have no idea what to do. And without a plan like this, I don't think we have any idea whether it's gonna be $0 or $10 million to make these repairs. So at some point, somebody has to invest in doing some engineering studies to determine what's the, what's the condition of these dams, do they need repair work, and if they do, how much it will cost. And the reason that it happened this way, if you were to, if you were to go back, and I don't remember when that other resolution was, but if you were able to go back in time, the discussion then was, there are other communities, other than the one that we've talked about originally, that simply can't afford this upfront money.
Exactly.
So, we have money in stormwater. Should stormwater fund this upfront study to get the process started? And that's, I think, why you're here, because we, we can theoretically put in place a mechanism to recoup the money, but it's really just in theory until we know what the volume of that money's going to be before we know which mechanism is the best one to use. So, there's a point where, at some point, somebody has to go first, and I think what we've done is we've gone first.
Sure, well, I just wanted to, but I think, but, and my point is that it goes between just what you said, the have and the have-not. So you have a subdivision that has homes $300,000 up to $1 million. Then you got another subdivision that's got trailer homes in it. So we've gotta really look at that, because you can't say, well, we're gonna do this and we're gonna impose it because the community who had, you know, the million-dollar homes, they all showed up and said, hey, we'll pay it back. But what about the other communities? So I think that we've gotta look at, you know, all the communities together, come up with a plan that is good for everybody, not just for one community.
And it might be that you have different plans for different communities, but ultimately, you, this board gets to make those decisions about how that money is paid back.
Okay, and my thoughts are, I'm concerned that, I've been open to this, but I've since then done some more homework and thought about a couple of things. The biggest concern I now have is that the county is taking a little bit of responsibility for private properties, private dams. And granted that there would be some mechanisms by which dollars can be connected, I mean, collected, we haven't defined that, but I also know that in many parts of this community, and we've been getting emails about, you know, we've got individuals that own homes that then don't even live here in the county. And so how do you address that? Because you're dealing with someone who really may not have a true investment other than collecting rent from those who are in their homes. So my position has changed on this. I am not in favor of it primarily for those reasons, but I do agree that we've got to figure out, how do we address the issue, especially if it's gonna impact loss of lives downstream, or if it's going to impact water quality? So we've got to look at this from a comprehensive standpoint. I do regret, especially for those who are in the Lake Dow area, because I think this has been going on way before this board now sits at the table, but we've got to figure out something that is fair and consistent for all of our communities throughout the county. So that's my position. Commissioner Thomas?
Well, I really wanna echo some of the things that we've already heard. Number one, we want to point out the fact that these are privately-owned dams. These are not public dams, so everybody does not have access to them. But we are considering using public dollars to just determine what type of work is needed. And if you notice, he stated the $80,000, $418,000, $410,000, $405,000 is really there to do an engineer study. That does not start any repairs, correct?
That's correct.
So that means we can end up having repairs that are in the tens of millions of dollars that would have to be recouped somewhere in some form by this county, and that's a lot of money. The average person stays in their house five to seven years. That's what most realtors say, and then they move on to another area. So whoever's coming into that area, be it a person buying or a person that's renting, would have to, or the property owner ultimately, will have to either pick up that tab and keep paying for the costs of these repairs. And there's so much we can tax, and it would take quite a long time to recoup $10 million, $12 million, or $20 million. We have four dams that we're considering here, so it's quite feasible that that could be $20 million easily, just in repairs. And in saying that, we have to consider, again, we're talking about using public dollars for it, but the public would not have access to this. In addition to that, we have other private communities that have concerns, and those private communities are required to take care of their own roads, their own infrastructures themselves. If we start putting public dollars in private entities like this, we're setting some type of tone for those other communities to say, well, I don't have a dam, but I do have a road. I don't have a dam, but I do have a sewer problem. I don't have a dam, but I do have something else going on, and we may be opening up something that we are not prepared to address. So I too need us, as a board, to step back and decide what type of policies or procedures are we going to put in place to address issues in private areas, and what type of dollars should be going out for that? Or do we need to create something, knowing it's going to take 10 years, 20 years to recoup those dollars from the taxpayers now? And we're not ready for that right now.
All right.
There's nothing in place to help us with that now. Thank you.
Thanks.
You said that the people within this catch basin could be taxed for, to recoup the money, right?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The catch basins of these lakes? The people within the catch basin lake?
Oh, yeah, within the basin, yes.
To increase stormwater fees?
Correct.
Well, these people within the catch basin don't have the accessible, they're not have the accessible for the lake.
Right.
So these people outside the lake is paying for something they can't use.
Right, that's one, that's one of the options, the people directly living within the, within the lake.
Right.
Having access, or going, in addition to that, just a basin area, which at that point, it will be a bigger area. And you're correct, these are private lakes, so they will not be, you know, being able to access since it's private.
So the backup plan to these dams is to drain the lake, right?
Say that again?
To drain the lake. If you don't fix the dam, drain the lake.
That, that'd be correct. That's the worst case scenario, yes, sir.
That's all.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, Rocky, Commissioner Wilson touched on some, but you actually had three scenarios where we could do the, the funding, and I was just wondering, could, could we consider, the board would consider that we work out an agreement with each one of these communities, and we bond the money, and we impose a special tax district, using the voting system that was used before that allowed the voters in that, just the impacted area, not out, not in the drainage area, but just the folks in those areas, pay for this back?
That's definitely an option.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson, and I've got a comment as well.
Well, as we speak of options, there is something else. Drain in the lake, as you stated. Some type of special tax allocation is another thing that can be used. And there's another option. Give us the land.
That is another option.
Those communities can give us this land, the Henry County Board of Commissioners, for all of us to land. Let our citizens have access to these lakes, everyone.
Enjoy the lake, yeah.
So if we all pay for it, we all have access to it. And as you do that, you have created another type of recreation for the citizens of Henry County that can fall into parks and recreations, and maybe then we can see how we, Henry County, can pay for it, access it, and participate.
That's a, that's a good option. That's another option, yes.
Questions or comments? The comment that I wanted to make as well is, I just do agree that we need to, the communities need to have some plan of their own. And I think that what the county can and should do is offer resources, safe dams. I think the water authority needs to be included in some of these discussions as well, but I forget the number of dams that we have located throughout the county, because that was in an earlier presentation. But those need to, you know, again, be addressed individually by each community, in my opinion, and they can be given their options of what they need to do so that we're not, at least, taking some subsidy or responsibility for something that could blossom into something bigger. I sit on the Metro Water District Board, will be more than happy to do some research and partner you all with whomever at that level, too, because this could also have some, some precedence that others would impact other parts of the, of the Metro Water District. All right. So at this time, are there any other questions or comments? And the floor is now, if not, the floor is open for a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution, but the only thing I would add is we work out an agreement with the different communities to work out a mechanism how we're gonna pay it back.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? We've heard the motion. Is there a second? Hearing none? You did not, but.
Thank you.
Okay, so, resolution does not move forward. All right, we'll now move to the next item, which is, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, oh, sure.
Basically, I do see some, some utility in this, and, but I don't, I don't wanna kill it. I think there needs to be further discussion, so I wanna make a motion that we table it and have further discussion on how we can move forward to see if we can serve these communities in the future. That's my motion.
Okay, we've got a, we've got a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that one. Okay, a first and a second. Any further discussions? All in favor of that motion to work with the communities? So can we clarify what we just voted on? So clerk?
What I heard was this matter is tabled.
Tabled.
And what I also heard was staff will bring back to the board alternative, big-picture plans for both the engineering services and dam repairs, and I would presume even upgrade or, you know, maintenance and upkeep of those dams before you move forward. That's the instructions that I took from it.
That's what I understood. Okay, any further clarity? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move to the next item, which is a resolution imposing a temporary moratorium on permits for development and construction of new industrial and warehouse projects. And we're inviting up the county manager for that, is what it's shown. And at this time, as the county manager is coming, I, there was a resolution from the Henry County Development Authority that was presented. Is the board open to hearing from the Development Authority after the presentation or not?
No, I'm not.
Okay, those in favor of hearing from the Development Authority, please signal. One, two, three, those that are not. Okay, all right.
Chair, can I, can I say something before we start? Before, oh, Chair, sorry. Chair, I hope that you, and I, and I actually have been a huge voice about this moratorium, and I just wanna make it public to why. When I was running for office, I heard the citizens' concern about our infrastructure challenges, about the traffic, about the trucks, about the warehouses, and a huge part of the industrial area is the west side, southwest side of the county. And I was hopeful. I was hopeful because we had a whole lot of projects that were on the tip. We were expecting a diamond at 155. We were expecting a western parallel connector. We were, we were promised Jonesboro Road would be widened. There were a whole lot of projects that were on the transportation improvement plan by the state. That was in 2014, 15, 16, we got it, and I was hopeful that Henry County was gonna get some help for our traffic nightmare. Recently, and over the last, I said, six to eight months, we were told that our projects had been pushed back. They would not be funded. We're looking at 2034, before we get any help with this traffic, and I'm very concerned. And I thought that this would be an opportunity for us to do what the citizens have asked us to do, and that is to manage this growth. to do what the citizens have asked us to do, and that is to manage this growth. To come up with a plan of how we stop looking for a handout from the state and fund our own infrastructure issues. And there's money that is left on the table that we're not getting. And I know we're going to go into this and you're going to give us a lot of details, but I really wanted to talk about why this is so crucially important to our citizens. There was a board appointment a couple of months ago where I was appointed to the Board of Behavioral Health in the county, to the McIntosh Trail Board, because I'm really passionate about mental health. Three weeks later, that same organization put up something before our zoning board to be approved for a residential treatment center in my district. I did not feel that, sitting on that board, that I could properly, without, you know, any biases or without just clear definition of who I was elected by, to make a decision on that. So I stepped down from that board because that board did not elect me. The citizens of this county elected me. And with that, I would say it's just really critical that the public is assured that the elected officials are free to exercise their best judgment without any partiality when we're voting on items that come before this board that impacts the citizens. And our chair, and Chair Wood, you have been nominated for the economic, you're on the Economic Development Board for the state. You're on the stormwater board. You're on the juvenile, you're on the criminal justice board. And this matter today is particularly crucial to our citizens. It's particularly crucial to those who are driving in that traffic where these industrial areas are. And I would ask that you do like I did and recuse yourself from this vote so that there's no partiality about whether you're voting for economic development for more warehouses from the state or whether you're voting for these citizens who are here today to say, hey, this is not an anti-warehouse bill. This is not a D. Clemens anti-warehouse. This is a moratorium means say, pause for just a moment. Because guess what? We don't collect impact fees from the warehouses. That's money. We collect sixteen hundred dollars from every home that is built. We don't collect impact transportation bill or fees. We are leaving money on the table. When we talk about the money that the state is giving us, and everybody says, well, when is Henry County going to come to the table with some money? There's money that we can get, but we've got to take a pause. We've got to create some policies. We've got to create some ordinances. We've got to put some things in place and just say for twelve months. If the, if the county gets it done in six months, then guess what? The moratorium goes away. They get it done in three months, it goes away. But we've got to come up with a, we got a comprehensive transportation plan. But we don't have a comprehensive infrastructure plan to talk about what do we do? And that's what this is about. So I'll know that everybody's talking about D. is opposing warehouses. D. don't want, no, D. wants help for her citizens. I live here too. If I lose my election for asking for a moratorium, so be it. But I want to bring it before this board so that this county, this state of Georgia knows where does Henry County stand with helping its citizens. So I'm asking you, Chair, let the five of us vote. Recuse yourself. Don't tie this up so that the citizens don't get help. But if this fails today, we will continue to move with growth, growth, growth without a plan. So I want to have, we have an explosive growth here, and I just want to slow it down just a little bit to come up with a plan. So please present it.
Well, no, I've got to respond to that. First of all, I will not recuse myself. This is the right that I have as a chair to represent the citizens. Second of all, this moratorium, I am totally against. Why? First of all, this sends a huge message to that Henry County is closed for business. Now, if we're so serious about managing infrastructure, if we're so serious about addressing economic development and growth right here, why do we definitely just recently stopped the progress of an interchange? Why have we not come together as a joint county and cities, which I'm going to make a recommendation on what we do, to help come together to address the priorities? Now, at this time, yes, I do agree that we have some traffic congestion. But I will tell you, the recent zoning matters, the recent developments that have been approved have been mostly in residential and mixed-use areas along major corridors. We've had citizens that have come here to speak about the concerns that they have about developments in every district that is included residential, that includes an impact to the roads that are already so congested. So what do we need to do? Yes, I do agree that the transportation needs to be a key priority. That's why I was so excited to see that there was a transportation planner placed into the budget. What has got to happen? Henry County has got to do just like every other community. We've got to come together. That comprehensive transportation plan is piecemealed. It has sat there. It has not been implemented. There are certain parts of it that has been addressed. So it's not just the freight corridors. It's not just the state highways. We've got to start thinking about how are we going to move people from, to career and job nodes here in this community through fixed routes and transit? So as I think about what all of this does, when we send the message that we're going to put a moratorium on warehouses and industries, we were just featured in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution about how these warehouses, these advanced manufacturers have introduced robotics with salaries that equate up to sixty-eight thousand dollars. There are households that are making thirty thousand, but we've got jobs opportunities right here. When I'm sitting at these boards and I'm sitting here listening to these other communities, I will tell you, they are fighting for the very things that we're trying to put a moratorium on. Now, if we want to continue Henry County to be advanced in economic development, not just in industry, not just in just developing commercial, we just approved a comprehensive land use plan. What did the comprehensive land use plan do? It said, this is where residential should be. This is where commercial should be. This is where industrial should be. What we need to do as a board is enforce that. Now, as I sit there on those boards of the economic development, I want to tell you, the first thing that I was doing is already speaking about. If we talk about economic development, we've got to understand that Henry County is at the seat right now. We want to be part of the competition for definitely economic development that brings in technology. We want to be recognized for some of the great industries that are coming into the whole metro Atlanta area. The whole state of Georgia is twenty-five percent based on logistics and advanced manufacturing. Do we want to pull ourselves out of the game? Because the decisions we're talking about is not tomorrow. Every road that we just spoke about is in the pipeline. What we've got to figure out is how to accelerate it into the plan. We've got to also make sure that we are following these pla, these projects because that's been part of the problem. We've been having a, an opportunity to sit at the table, but we've not been dogging these things. What do I mean by dogging? Identify where it is in the pipeline, where does it need to go, and what Henry County is going to bring to the table. So I would just say, Henry County, we are open for business. We need to be at the table just like everyone else. I'm glad to sit on these boards so that I can sit there and represent Henry County in a way that says that we're into the game. Now, if we continue, I mean, yes, we can let some of these warehouses, as you may call it, but there's a difference between warehouses, advanced manufacturing, e-commerce, because right now, that's where things are moving, everyone. People are not going to stores every day. They're ordering online. And here we are with seventeen percent of our tax digest, which relates to your property taxes, which says that one advanced manufacturing house or industry pays the taxes of about three hundred and sixty-four homes. So the industries and the growth that we're talking about is not just, just industries. It's also residential. And I'm not wanting to slow down the residential side of it as well. We've got to think about how we're going to have housing options for the people that live here. We've got to also think about other things. We also just talked about having some additional traffic that may be associated with conference centers and other things like that. So what we've got to do, in my opinion, is get very serious. Come together between the county and the cities. Definitely identify the priorities in the comprehensive transportation improvement plan. And by August, which is when we've got to start submitting priorities, this gives us a chance to talk about it. We soon are going to be talking about a SPOS project. And the SPOS projects that are including transportation, that is another opportunity. Do we have enough money? Oh, the, in the comprehensive transportation plan, there was exactly, I think, about two billion dollars of transit and costs that would be needed. Two billion dollars. Henry County alone would not be able to do anything. And if we don't get the plans into the regional plan, we won't even get the state and federal funding. Now, I do agree that things have lagged. I wish I was on the board twenty years ago to have a voice. I wish that this talent on this board came together and said, y'all, let's get serious. Let's stop identifying what is and what isn't and find out how we're going to come together, work with these cities, and get serious about Henry County. So that is all my comments. I'm honored to sit on the boards. I would tell you, as a matter of fact, one of those boards I'm getting ready to come off of just because I believe that the dedication and focus for Henry County as it relates to transportation needs to be addressed. Then comes the economic development. So we've got opportunities, and I'm glad to be here to, to voice my vote. So thank you. Any other comments from the board before we allow the presentation? Commissioner Holmes?
Commissioner Clemens. We all got elected to represent Henry County. And I do believe with the appointment to the state economic board that it, it is a complete conflict of interest for the chair to vote because you're representing the state. And the state has been bringing these warehouses into Henry County for the last fifteen to twenty years. And there has never been an effort to diversify the industries that we attract to Henry County. And it is time. The citizens have spoken. But, you know, we're not only attracting warehouses, now there's talk about bringing an inland port to Henry County. Who wants to see a huge shipyard along I-75? That is not going to do anything for our tax base. It's not going to do anything for, for property values. It's not going to do anything to bring the type of progressive industries that we want in Henry County. Seventy percent of our, our, our tax base works in Atlanta or north, or north, North Fulton, North Fulton County. They don't, they don't work here. The people that work in these warehouses don't even live in Henry County. They live in Spalding County, Bus County. So when they get their check, they take those checks back to the south and they spend them there in those communities. We need to create economic development in Henry County where our citizens can be employed right here at home and spend their money at home. It's, 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 it's time to stop bringing in all these warehouses and these semi-trucks. We just had a presentation from a lady about a month ago who talked about sex trafficking. And the reason why she talked to me, because I, I told her, I said, I talked to our police department. We don't have an issue with sex trafficking. She said, you do. You have an issue because most of the, most of the sex traffickers are transporting these children through Henry County, from the north to Florida. So we do have an issue. And the more semi-trucks we bring to Henry County, the more of an opportunity we're going to give those people that are trafficking sex with our children. So we, we, we need to rethink this. I think the moratorium is only for one year. And it's not for, for warehouses that you guys are currently working with. I agree with Commissioner Clemens. I'm totally on board with this. It's time for Henry County to change. We need to build industries that, that support the current affluent tax base that we have in this county. It's time to move forward.
Well, in response, I will not recuse myself today. I will vote today. I will also say that, yes, I'm in support of the inland port, and that's by because it would be in the south part of the county. The south part of the county that would allow a lot of jobs, because inland ports bring jobs, by the way. And I also say that it would help address the freight from coming towards and through all of, north of Henry County and into the metro region. Now, yes, I do agree that there are some issues with sex trafficking. That still needs to be an issue. That needs to be addressed statewide. So, excuse me, I'm having conversation. I did not interrupt, and I don't think we should interrupt each other. So I will say, I'm going to listen to this resolution. I have no further comments to make. I've stated what I want to say, and I'm looking forward to the presentation of the resolution that is before us. Yes, Commissioner Clemens?
I want to make sure that we put into the notes that the inland port that the state of Georgia Economic Development Authority is looking to place, that our chair just said that she is supporting that inland port to come to Henry County. What does that mean? That means that all of those shipyard containers that are coming off the ship in Savannah will be put in Henry County and sit there, and then they will go from the inland port. Look it up. Look at what it does to the environment. Look at what it does to the environment. Look at what it does for our community and our gas and our air in the environment having an inland port in Henry County. This is, I'm not finished. Look at what that does. Now, we may not be able to stop the chair today. But if Henry County wants an inland port, you know, this, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm stuck for words because I never thought that you were really supporting that inland port coming to Henry County. I didn't say anything about an inland port, and I'm, I'm, I'm really upset that we are, I, I would be moving if we get an inland port. Um, that, that's, that's not a good thing. So we just need to think about, do we really want an inland port? And how do we, and if, and if the chair is going to bring the inland port, we definitely need this moratorium. So we can talk about how do we address the traffic and the conditions of that? How do this county benefit from having an inland port? I, I, this wasn't about the inland port, but I didn't know that that was the move. And that is definitely a move from the state and not from the citizens of this community.
Well, let, let me also, go ahead and finish, please. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we need to look at how that affects the environment. And if that's what we want in Henry County, what is Henry County turning to?
Well, that is a good question.
What, what is our future? What do we become as an inland port community? We're talking about, what I hear the citizens talking about is higher, higher, better restaurants, better shopping areas, not a shipyard in the middle of our community. And we're in the south, and no one benefits from an inland port but private landowners because the county don't own no land to sell it. So no one is going to benefit from that inland port but those landowners. So if you find out who owns the land, you'll find out who owns the chair.
Well, excuse me, that is a personal comment that you just made, and I will excuse that. But what I do want you all to remember, it wasn't just but a couple of months ago that I came off of this diocese and I came down onto that podium. And I spoke about a vision for Henry County that spoke about the industrial hub being sa, in the south part of the county. I spoke about in the Stock Bridge and North Henry, it being a technology and medical hub. I remember speaking about on the west side of I-75, where there's Hampton and also parts of the Jodeco Road that has been discussed as being an entertainment and tourist hub. I spoke about on the west side of seventy, on the east side of seventy-five, where there is already much of an education and entrepreneurship hub being developed. So again, I'm going to go back to the comprehensive transportation plan. It is the scope of work and the plan that says, this is how we want Henry County to form for the future. Every commissioner on this board have an opportunity and gave opportunity for input. There were citizens that came in and spoke about how they want Henry County to look into the future. This board of commissioners voted on that comprehensive transportation plan or the comprehensive land use plan. I do remember speaking about Henry County being more than a warehouse industrial hub. We need variety. Yes, our citizens are screaming definitely for transportation and traffic relief. And this board has the responsibility to address that. I will tell you, even at the sake of whatever people say about being reelected, I have no respect, and I definitely take offense to anyone questioning the integrity that I have when I'm sitting here. When I'm downtown talking to people, I'm not talking about certain parts of Henry County. I'm taking the plans and the approvals that this board has represented. There is nobody that will pay me to do anything that I do not believe is in the best interest of this county. I do not accept political favors, and I do not get involved in any of that. But that's for me to understand. Y'all are hearing these comments, but that's up to you voters. All I'm saying right now, Henry County has an opportunity to diversify its industries. We already are known for the warehouses and the industries and in a positive light, especially with robotics and good paying jobs for now and the future. I also say that we have an awesome opportunity, already started up there in North Henry and in the Stock Bridge area for medical and technology. We've got to get into the game of that. And I will tell you, from an economic development standpoint, what do people want? They want skill sets, people that can come in and fill the jobs for now and into the future. That's why that's the second and most important thing that Henry County's got to deal with. Now, in order for our, our citizens and our businesses to stay here, we've got to have a quality of life. Some people don't want the change, but we're going to have to change. That's why it is important that we look over there in the Hampton area regarding that wonderful comprehensive plan that would have mixed use and entertainment. And again, partner with some of these cities on what they're doing to attract our young people and our millennials and to take care of the citizens. So I appreciate the comments. Any other comments that any of the boards would like to make? Commissioner Barr?
Yes, first comment, I, I fully support the chair voting on this issue. It's, it's her right, and just like it's everybody else's- And just like it's everybody else's right up here. I so, totally support her voting. I, I would like to say, you know, when it comes to truck traffic and, and this, this thing we just got, we just got, we hadn't really had a chance to look it over too much. We just got it last night. But we had a golden opportunity to, to make a move and trying to relieve some of that 155 traffic by supporting the interchange. That was a splash vote that was voted on by the citizens. I was on the board at the time and, and along with Commissioner Holmes. And we supported a splash list at that time that, that incurred that. And we, we have an opportunity to, to make some kind of move in that direction and it didn't, didn't pass. But I know, you know, these trucks ain't going down 81 Highway and some of these other roads around Henry County is, is not just truck traffic. I think a small piece of it. But, uh, we've got some other issues with transportation around Henry County. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Wilson, then Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, Dante, several months back, we rezoned a piece of property for warehouses over in District Two. Correct?
Correct.
How many square feet of warehouses were approved for this, over there?
Specifically, it was for an industrial rezoning. Uh, they rezoned to M1, if memory serves me correctly. And it was approximately three million square feet, proposed conceptual drawing of industrial warehouse space.
And also, we approved the mega site monies to go over that way as well, correct?
Yes, the mega site encompassed six thousand plus or minus acres.
That's right. So what's going inside the mega site?
The goal of the mega site is to eventually have a master plan that will, in the long-term court industries of the advanced manufacturing type of, of industry. Uh, and that includes commercial and residential. So what you're looking at is, uh, in addition to things like high-end homes, lakefront homes, condos, townhomes, brownstones, uh, hotels, you're looking at executive-type commercial industry. You're looking at biomedical, pharmaceutical, um, gaming, TV, filming. Gaming, that's contingent upon the state legislation, of course. But you're also looking at, um, technological types of, of industry. So you're looking at it more of a, uh, an economic stability or economic engine and hub in that mega site, long-term.
Do we have any data on how many tractor-trailers, percentage of tractor, of, of traffic they, they take up? So do we have any data of tractor-trailers? How much they, they entail to traffic in Henry County? Is it thirty percent, thirty-five percent? Do we know that? Do we have a data for that?
No.
So...
Commissioner Wilson, we don't have a percentage, but I do recall in our comprehensive transportation plan that was done in 2016, that Henry County had the fifth highest count when it comes to the amount of truck traffic along the interstate. And that was second to Cobb County, um, on the I-75 corridor going towards Cobb. And that was about twenty thousand AADT, which is your aver, average annual daily trips.
Yeah, I think it's thirty-one thousand per day. Is that correct?
That's about right.
That's what the state's reporting.
That's my understanding.
And that's going to double in the next ten years, twenty years?
That is what I'm hearing from the state. Yes, sir.
So if interchange is not put in place, that we're going to be kind of stuck with the 155 jam up for all these sixty thousand trucks. So...
Oh, are you done, Commissioner? What?
So, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Holmes?
Commissioner Wilson just mentioned 2016. Was 2016 the same year that we voted on a T-Splash? And the same commissioners that support all this truck traffic voted no for the T-Splash?
If I remember correctly, there was a resolution that came to the board in sixteen or seventeen. But, yes, sir.
And the same commissioners up here today that voted against it are the ones that are, um, supporting all the warehouse traffic today, correct?
It's my understanding that the T-Splash vote did not pass. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, just to be clear on the interchange, I mean, you know, I hear commissioners up here talking about the interchange as if we're going to be able to fund the interchange today. We're talking four million dollars. The interchange is going to cost somewhere about between seventy and a hundred million dollars. It's supposed to be funded by the federal government. However, the federal government hasn't given us any indication that they're going to approve an interchange. So what are we spending the four million dollars on now? Why not just wait until we get the, you know, the funding guaranteed by the federal government and then look at funding the interchange? It does not make sense for us to spend four million dollars today when we know we're not, we're more likely we're not going to get the money, from what I hear. I, I still don't have any confidence that that money is ever going to come to Henry County for interchange. So why would we even consider using four million dollars that we can use somewhere else?
Okay, I'm Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Barn, Commissioner Clemmons, Commissioner Thomas and myself.
So I respond to that. In my splash, in Splash Five in District One, a hundred percent of my money in District One is transportation. A hundred percent. I have no capital project at all. Now, with the, the four point one million dollars toward the interchange, that, that money was broken up in several phases. Phase one was the conception of plan. Phase two is environmental impact. That's a one point three million dollar. If we could get that part passed and move forward, then we could get a, some answers from GDOT on what, which way to go. But them two phases have to be done first before we get any, any input from, um, for them guys. So, I'm, that's my comment. I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Barn, then Commissioner Clemmons, and then Commissioner Thomas, and then myself.
In response to, um, District Five, I, you saying you're hearing that, that we're not going to get this interchange? Who are you hearing this from?
I mean, I heard it from a very credible source in 2013 when we, when we voted on it, voted to put it in Splash. From a very credible source. So we haven't gotten it. The project, I mean, it's, it's, it's four or five years later and the project still isn't on this, on it, on the, on the tip. So apparently something isn't going right. All of a sudden, you know, we're pushing to, um, pushing this interchange and it's in the, at the same time, the Chair gets appointed to the Economic Development, um, uh, State Committee. So, so none of this stuff really makes sense to me.
Again, again, District Five, who are you getting this information from?
The last meeting, I already stated where it came from.
But you didn't give a name.
I don't need to give a name. You can go, go do your research. We don't have the money. The federal government hasn't said they're going to give us the funding. Um, when you guys produce that information, then we'll reconsider. But until you reproduce that information, my vote is no.
Um, you know, you know, I, I hadn't heard that we weren't going to get it. I know we're not going to get it if we don't move forward, uh, approving what we set aside in Splash to move that project forward. And this resembles the same thing. It's a technical college. We, we appropriated five million dollars for that. And thankfully, it got passed. And along with that, we got eighteen million dollars from the state on the technical college, which is huge for Henry County. And I want to say this. Whether it's in District Three, or District Four, or District Five, it shouldn't matter. Each one of us up here represent the whole county. And, uh, you know, it's just mind-boggling to me that we just, uh, just not working together on these county-wide projects. And this was a county-wide project. And that's all I will say.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
You know, um, I just want to make sure that we're always educating the public. And the interchange project was a Splash project, four point four million dollars. But there was a letter that we asked for from the Federal Highway Authority about what their position was. Now, I taught English. I'm an English major. I read very well and I understand very well. That letter stated that there were two things that the federal government required before they would even go back and look to see if this interchange has been approved. We're stating an interchange as if the interchange or the roads belong to the county. It is a federal highway. And in order to do an interchange on the federal highway, you've got to have the Federal Highway Authority to do it. They made two statements. One, they said you had to have the engineering report done. And the second, they said it must be placed in the state's tip. The reason that I got alarmed and concerned is because Jonesboro Road was in the tip. 155 was in the tip. The Western Parallel Connector was in the tip. I have just lost my faith in what the state says that they're going to do for Henry County. And I'm going to ask Sherri, because I asked for this two weeks ago, if they finally have the information on everything that we were promised in the tip? And what is the date that it was promised? And where is it now? Because even if we spend the four point four million or the one million, we're not guaranteed that it's going to go in the tip. And even if it goes in the tip, we're not promised that it's going to be funded. I say fund the stuff that affects our citizens now, like 155 Diamond and 155 Interchange. Fund the Western Parallel Connector so we can get off of 75 and have an access road like they have up 85 North. Fund the Western Parallel Connector. Fund the widening of Jonesboro. Let's fund the stuff that they've already put on the tip before we go add a ninety million dollar interchange to the tip. That will never go away. We need the interchange. I am pro interchange. But there are some immediate priorities that this county has now that we can do. If the state promised us two hundred million dollars total with this moratorium, we can get a plan in place to say, "Hey, out of the five projects that were planned to us, these are the two most important ones. And we need to take the two hundred million dollars, instead of sending it up to Cobb County to finish their projects, leave our money in Henry County so that we can do two projects, even if it is interchange." Maybe it's the interchange. Maybe we do 155 and the interchange and we don't do the other ones. But we've got to have a plan and you can't come up with a plan unless you get an expert. None of us are experts on that. But I tell you what, we should be an expert on what is needed in our communities. And this is county-wide. This is not district-specific. So Sherri, what were we promised already in the tip? And so that these commissions can see, they need to have as little faith in the tip as possible, because they can't even get this tip done. We're down there talking. I bet if I was down there, ARC would get our money.
So Commissioner Clemmons, you mentioned Jonesboro Road and Western Parallel Connector.
And I want to know the original date we were promised to have it done? And what is the new date?
So for Jonesboro Road, we were initially told 2024. Um, we've since been told 2032 will be the new date for Jonesboro Road.
Okay.
And then for the Western Parallel Connector, um, it is still on schedule for 2023, but the scope of the project has been reduced due to cost. Um, so in a meeting with GDOT three weeks ago, one of the things that they asked the county is if we would be amenable to reducing the project alignment, meaning shortening the project. Um, for those that may or may not know, the Western Parallel Connector would have taken us from Jonesboro Road to Hudson Bridge Road. Um, there's been some conversation now that there's only enough funding to only construct the northern end of that project, would only be from Jodeco to Hudson Bridge. And so the southern portion would be reduced. And again, that is due to lack of funding.
Okay. And the other one's 155?
And then 155 is on the construction for 2030.
Wow. And it was promised for when? Initially. Construction was, rocket construction was supposed to start?
Right.
2025 is designed? So we could expedite those projects? We could expedite those projects. So do we put four point four million on the interchange? Or do we put that four point four million on the design for 155? Do we go and impose impact fees on these warehouses and these transportations and come to the table with some money and handle our own business? Charity starts at home and then spreads abroad. We can pay the designers, we can pay engineers, we can pay attorneys, we can pay everybody. But we don't have the money to fix our roads. The existing warehouses and industrial areas that we have down there now, they need help. They need more than the CID. They need the CID, but they also need more help. We've got to take care of the people that are already here before we continue to bring more in. So, yeah, we can put the interchange on the tip, but we can't even get the things that's on the tip funded.
Okay, um, you're done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Okay, let me see if I can catch up here. We've covered a lot. And some of the things I want to say is really for the citizens that are here and for myself, because I'm the six-month person, almost six months of being on the board. And a lot of these things were started prior to me. But with that being said, one of the things that we have to do is realize who we are and what we are. When I read this resolution, one of the things it said to me that we have a lot of homework to do, a lot of homework to do. This resolution states that we do not have, we have a unified land development code, but apparently we are not following it the way we should. We don't have a comprehensive transportation plan. My question is why and what's taking so long? One of the things that I have put forth to this board in conversation and definitely to the county manager was putting forth a transportation authority. Making sure that authority takes the plan that has already been put in place into actions. One of the things the county manager did to start that process was to place a position available, and I'm not sure the title that you gave it, Transportation Director, Transportation Administrator? I'm not sure. Uh, whatever that title is, she placed that in the budget to help with this process. And by having a transportation authority, we need to then turn back to the Board of Commissioners and have each one of them place someone on that authority board. And they will operate very similar to our Henry County Development Authority. So we will have a working committee to put together reports, to submit to this board, to put in action what we are going to do. If we don't do that twelve months from now, the same conversation will take place. In addition to that, we talk about the fact, this resolution said to me that we do not have a comprehensive infrastructure plan. And again, I was surprised to see that we do not have a comprehensive infrastructure plan. Uh, in order to make that happen, and we don't want to be in the same position again twelve months from now, we need a working committee, not a volunteer committee. And I propose that that committee comes from internally. We need something like maybe two people from the Development Authority, one person from zoning, one person from management, and one person, that Transportation Director, be placed upon that committee. And one person from administrator, be it, um, Mr. Johnson or be it county manager, to steer that committee. Within six months, we need a report. That report need to give us a plan as to what direction we are going. Because if not in twelve months, we will be back here again with this very same discussion without a plan as to what we are actually going to do. It is very obvious we have to stop. We do. We do. We have to stop and put something in place. Because at this point in time, we're hopscotching around and putting out fires. We're taking on issues and saying, this is what we'll do for this issue, this is what we'll do for that issue. One thing to notice in this resolution, they haven't had opportunity to read it yet, that it talks about impact fees from warehouses. We do not receive any type of impact fees from warehouses as they are. And that's ridiculous. We need to make sure we stop. Just like we caused the residential builders to pay impact fees to us, we need impact fees from these warehouses. Because that money can turn around and help us with the infrastructure problem that we're having. We can use that money to help us with the trucks damages caused to the road. So that's something we just need to stop and make it happen. That's not something that take two or three years. That can be done within two or three months or even a shorter period of time, just putting it together to make it happen. And I'm sad to say again, this document tells us we failed to do that. And that's failure on behalf of this board. Another things we need to adequately address, and I've tried to do that, is state who would get this done, how will it get it done, and when will we get it done? We need to make sure these working committees begin to work. And that way, this board has something to look at, to evaluate and decide how long this moratorium will stay in place. As Commissioner Clemens has stated, it's state 12 months on here, but this can be done in three months. It can be done in six months. It can be done in 12 months. The whole goal is to not just let things happen, but to plan and make sure we have a comprehensive infrastructure plan, transportation plan that's working for the county. One of the things too, let me see here. So many notes. We want to definitely review on a consistent basis, and that needs to be quarterly, hopefully from our county commissioner, county manager, stating that the ongoing committees are working and are putting together a proposal that this Board of Commissioner can look at to determine from each board member, each board meeting, whether or not this moratorium will continue. We have some wonderful notes from the Henry County Development Authority talking about the impact that that these warehouses bring to our community. We do need the jobs. We do need the money, but we don't need to leave money on the table as well. We need to make sure we do have a variety of jobs brought to Henry County. And the only way to make that happen again is to stop what we're doing now and put these plans in action. The one thing I really would like to know, I think Dante just stated, we have over 3 million square feet of warehousing now available. I think that's what he said, something to that effect. We need to realize the moratorium does not stop the warehouses that are already in the pipeline getting ready to be built here. It does not stop that at all. They continue because they already have application in the system, they're already being processed. So that continues. It does not stop the expansion of what's already here. We're just looking at new companies that are coming and that the moratorium does not have to be in place for 12 months. So that's just something I want to point out to the community. It does make sense to do something to say we are looking at smart growth and development. We talk about that every time we run campaigns. It's almost a term that most politicians use. I support smart growth and development. I too support smart growth and development. But it never will happen if we don't stop and put something into action. And what I'm saying, we need to put these things into action to make sure we're not in the same position 12 months from now when we're looking at the community and they're still talking about infrastructure problems. When we talk about the 75 corridor and 4.4 million dollars being available, I think citizens here in Henry County want relief in their areas now. Not relief somewhere else, but they need relief in their own areas right now. We have already learned this putting around about in some areas have made a tremendous difference in traffic flow. And we need to make sure, we need to see what options are available in different communities, on different roads, how we can infuse them to make sure we're taking care of the citizens now. And I do understand that there's a heavy floor tractor trailers in our area, but that goes back to that Transportation Authority, that goes back to pulling that plan off the shelf. And that's what it's doing, sitting on a shelf, waiting on someone to institute it. And I'm proposing that we make that happen and go forward. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson, and then we'll allow the presentation of the resolution. There's no other comments. Commissioner Wilson?
Can you speak about, can you speak about the commercial truck lanes that the state's gonna build from Macon to McDonnell? Can you speak about that and what the funding has been put toward that project?
So I will pull that information because I don't have it readily available, but that is a project that's been ongoing for a number of years through the state. It's my understanding that it is gonna be totally state-funded through state and federal dollars with no local funds tapped to that project. In terms of a timeframe, I don't think it's in the very near future in terms of 2020 or 2022 because they are still in the planning process. But I certainly will get that information and get it available to the board.
Okay.
Commissioner Clemens, and I've got a comment.
And I want us to make sure that, and if nobody else does, I will. I will stop making promises to our community about this is coming, this is coming, when we know that in 2034, we just pray that we're still here when this stuff comes. Or talking about a truck lane is coming when we know that that's not coming for another 10 years as well. But also, when you do the presentation, the one thing that I didn't see in here that I think we need is designated truck routes because, you know, the trucks are still going into our neighborhoods and on our two-way streets. So we're talking about the moratorium, we also need to add a designated truck route so that the trucks know that these are routes they shouldn't be taking. When 75 is backed up, they shouldn't be coming down the two-way, two-lane roads, but there should be a designated truck route where they can't come on certain roads in our communities. So if you would just add that.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the commissioners? I'm gonna reserve mine till after the presentation. Okay? All right, well, if you will present the resolution now, we appreciate that.
Well, good morning, Chair and Board members, and myself and Dante are somewhat gonna tag-team the resolution. What I'll do first is present the resolution that we believe we've been asked to develop for consideration by the board. I know there's been a lot of conversation this morning and we certainly need to get some clarification on whether there needs to be some amendments to the resolution or truly the intent in terms of making sure that those developments that may be in the Harper are not impacted by whatever action the board does take. But you all do have a resolution in front of you this morning and it is an ordinance, it is an ordinance of Henry County, Georgia relating to the acceptance and/or approval of any applications or permits for rezoning, development or construction of warehouses, distribution facilities, industrial facilities and manufacturing facilities within unincorporated Henry County enacting a moratorium for an indefinite period not to exceed 12 months. Now, you all should have a five-page document which outlines in terms of what a moratorium, the purpose of the moratorium, and why the county is seeking to enact this moratorium. But I would ask the board to look at a couple of things and some things that we've added in the moratorium for consideration and certainly as one of the rationales for the enactment of this moratorium. We've talked a lot this morning about our Unified Land Development Code and Dante has placed on the overhead a copy of our future land use map, which I'll give him an opportunity to really go into details in terms of identifying where our industrial clusters are currently located. But in 2009, there was a Unified Land Development Code that was approved by the Board of Commissioners. And as part of the Unified Land Development Code, there were certain zoning districts outlined within the code, more specifically our M1 and M2 zoning districts, which permit by rights certain industrial and manufacturing-type developments. And then in 2016, Henry County did update its Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Now, we'll tell you prior to 2016, the county adopted its first-ever Comprehensive Transportation Plan in 2006. And that's shocking for a community of this size because there was never a transportation plan for a county that was experiencing a plethora of growth, but also for a county that was the fastest-growing county in the nation. And so irregardless of having that transportation plan in place, there were a lot of developments that were either being rezoned by the Board of Commissioners or developments that had set stagnant for some time that were in the process of being developed. And so fast forward, one of the things that our Comprehensive Transportation Plan identified was specific freight-specific corridors. And in the plan, they outlined the need to ensure that we have reliable mobility options and improvements in place to plan for the amount of industrial development that was already in place and to plan for these clusters that had already been identified on our future land use map. We talked a lot this morning, or I've heard from the board a lot this morning about impact fees, and I wanna just provide some form of a clarification. Currently, we collect impact fees for all residential development and then we do collect an impact fee for our commercial and industrial-type development, but it is not for transportation. Those impact fees are to make sure that we are ensuring that by adding that additional land use or new development, that the services are in place that would be needed for that type of development. So our impact fees are used within our fire protection, parks and rec, our libraries, our animal control, our sheriff's department. And so that's currently what our impact fees are being used for. Now, within this resolution, one of the things that we are recommending be a part of the moratorium and in, and one of the things that we're striving to look for is the creation of a development impact fee ordinance specifically for transportation improvements. Currently, there is nothing in place for any development, be it commercial, industrial or residential, that will require any type of development to contribute a certain dollar amount based on the impact that their development will have on our current infrastructure. Now, our code does require if you trigger a certain number or a certain number of trips, that you are required to do a transportation impact study. And then we will put those improvements on the developer. But there is no monetary contribution that is required for any development that comes throughout the county. And so I think what I heard this morning is that you all, while industrial is the focus, we wanna look at all of our infrastructure, making sure that we have fees in place so that when developments come in, be it a 300-unit residential development, that there is some fee that is assessed to those developers. Now, one of the things that we've talked about internally as a staff is what that number would look like. And unfortunately, without having a study in place, I don't wanna throw out a number. I know Commissioner Clemens mentioned the residential impact fee is 166150. And so that gives you an idea of the residential impact fee. But for transportation, there is a methodology that is utilized to determine what that fee would be. That methodology includes the, you've gotta identify the roads in question, the mileage along that road, the number of trips that are gonna be generated. So it's a host of things that have to be considered as part of determining what that fee would be. And so one of the things that's being recommended in the moratorium is that we do allow staff an opportunity to develop this development or at least hire someone to come in and develop a development impact fee ordinance so that we can start looking at imposing those fees. Now, I'll take a break for a second and let Dante go through the maps that are on the overhead and then I'll jump back in.
Very briefly, the maps you see on the overhead to the right is the future land use map that was adopted October 16, 2018. And just to kinda give everybody a perspective of where in Henry County our industrial developments or industrial zonings are. On, to the left on the overhead, the parcels colored orange, yellow, however you see that, I see it as orange, are where our industrial developments and locations are currently, where they are currently. So if you look to the Locust Grove, I-75 near 42 Route, that is our hub. That is what we have deemed our industry hub because it's been there, it was part of our Comprehensive Land Use Plan considerations with respect to our future land use map and comp plan initiative. So that is where the bulk of our industrial zoning and developments are located. There's a little bit to the north and a little to the west. But in general, the majority of our industrial area is where it already exists. And one other thing, if I may, did a little bit of research as quickly as I could. Over the last three years, we've had three industrial rezonings. One located on Lower Rulesy Road in 2018. It was rezoned to M1 and Commissioner Wilson, that's the rezoning you were referencing earlier. The other is located on Highway 155 and Bill Gardner. That was rezoned to M2 in 2018. And then in 2017, on Daily Mill Road, there was a rezoning to M1. These rezonings were respectively in District 2, 1, and 3.
Thank you, Dante. And so finally, in the resolution, we do indicate that in order to achieve the goals of short-term and long-term infrastructure planning, Henry County must develop a comprehensive infrastructure plan. And I think it's certainly in line with what Commissioner Thomas recommended in terms of the Transportation Committee Authority having some oversight over making sure that our comprehensive transportation plans that are projects that are in our plan, that we're implementing those projects. I will tell you, one of the things that we use as a basis for developing our SPOS program is to look at those projects that are in our CTP and pull those projects into our SPOS program for consideration as well. The purpose of the Comprehensive Infrastructure Plan is to identify our infrastructure needs, which you all have all said this morning, sources of funding and priorities in order to address the continued demands placed upon the county as a result of the rapid growth in warehousing, distribution facilities, industrial facilities and manufacturing facilities. One of the things that the board talked about during the last board meeting as we were having our SPOS presentation was again, the need to look at a T-SPOS. And I think a majority of the board, although the board took no action on it, agreed that we needed to look at transportation, our T-SPOS as an alternative because we do have a lot of transportation needs. I think Chair Wood said it, but our CTP identified $2 billion worth of transportation needs within our community. And one of the things that we're challenged with is our growth has outpaced our infrastructure. We've had a lot of residential development that has occurred. We've had a lot of commercial development that has occurred. And we've just had a lot of land uses that have occurred where the infrastructure has not been in place to catch up with that. And so one of the things that we do wanna focus on is creating this comprehensive infrastructure plan so that it can go in tangent with our CTP. Now, one of the things that we certainly need to do and one of the things that we'll be recommending irregardless of the decision or the action that the board takes is that we do have a joint meeting with our county and city partners to identify what our transportation priorities are. I'll tell you this morning, hearing you all go back and forth, for me, I identified priority one for this entire staff is transportation. That is what I'm hearing is, that is a priority for the county and we need to identify what those priorities are and to get it in front of the board so that we can start taking action on it. Now, the ordinance states, and this is where I'll need some guidance from the board because I think I've heard a couple of things this morning and certainly wanna make sure that we've captured everything, that the action that the board is being asked to take is the need obviously to create a CIP which necessitates, and CIP is a Comprehensive Improvement Plan, the limited cessation of development and building permits, occupational tax permits and other licenses, applications, permits or variances with respect to industrial uses being acted in such limited cessation is reasonable and within the public interest. So the action that's being asked for the board to consider is now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Georgia as follows. In order to ameliorate the conditions expressed and achieve the goals identified in the preamble hereof, the Henry County Board of Commissioners does hereby enact a moratorium for a period of 12 months on the following. Acceptance of applications to rezone any property to the M1 and M2 zoning classifications and acceptance of applications for or issuance of land disturbance permits, development permits and/or construction permits for warehouses, distribution facilities, industrial facilities and manufacturing facilities. Any such applications tendered and/or submitted to Henry County or any of its departments during this moratorium period shall not be accepted, considered, nor acted upon by Henry County or any of its departments. Any application so accepted for filing will be deemed an error, null and void and no effect whatsoever and shall constitute no assurance whatsoever of any right to engage in any act and any action in reliance on any such permit shall be unreasonable. This moratorium shall have no effect upon approvals of permits previously issued or as to development plans previously approved by the county or as to development activity commencing on property having received permitting for land disturbance or as to development plans under review or as to applications submitted for review prior to the effective date of this ordinance. Again, this will be so ordained this, that, fourth day of June 2019. Now, in the conversation this morning, what I think I heard from the board is that the intent of the moratorium was not to impact developments that may be in the Harper, but also, and this is where again, I'll need some clarification, any developments in which the Development Authority may currently be pursuing. If that is the intent, then this resolution will need to be amended to add that statement. Because currently, if there is anything that the Development Authority is pursuing, if a development permit has not been issued, they will not be able to proceed with that development activity. And so at this time, I'll turn it over to the board for any questions that you may have of staff or a representative from the Development Authority.
Okay, I'll make a statement, then Commissioner Clemens, Commissioner Wilson. One of the things that I hope that our board will understand is that we are the ones that actually every year have to identify priorities that are submitted for the Transportation Improvement Plan. This board has had opportunities for the last three years to identify priorities which then are presented to the ARC. I would say that based on what I've heard, I appreciate the map that says this is what we also agreed as to where our commercial land use will be, where our residential and where our industrial will be. Our board voted on that. I'd say that we need to enforce that. I do agree with many of the comments that Commissioner Thomas spoke about is that, first of all, we only had less than a week to even hear about a moratorium type of a resolution. And we just got a document to look at yesterday. And again, this shows if we don't sit down and talk about these things, which are such a major impact to our citizens, this is where we are. I do agree that we've got such a wonderful opportunity, not to fight against each other, but to come together for this county around transportation. I think we do a good job as it relates to public safety. So I just again, look forward to continue conversations around this. The thing I wanna do is say thank you, Commissioner Clemens, you did get the conversation started about what we need to do about issues. Now, what I concern myself about is if we're gonna do a moratorium, it needs to be against all industries and I don't agree with that. I do not agree that we need to stop our commercial and residential growth because all of these things are contributing to the traffic congestion because of the growth and the development that is coming here. Every month, we have planning and zoning matters that are impacting our roads. So those are my comments. I'll come to Commissioner Clemens, then Commissioner Wilson, then Commissioner Thomas.
I just wanna make sure that we keep saying Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And I don't wanna get the infrastructure of our roads mixed up with transit, with ports, with anything that has to do with anything other than the infrastructure. My concern was not about our Comprehensive Transportation Plan, where we're talking about combining with Atlanta or the region or bringing transit or buses or shuttles to Henry County. I want this really, really, really to be about our infrastructure challenges, our roads. I went to a ribbon cutting for D Waffle Baker down in, on 155 and it was 11 o'clock in the daytime. and it was eleven o'clock in the daytime, and one fifty-five, I could not move. I can only imagine if I had to do that every single day and I lived in Eagles Brook, or I lived in Heron Bay, or I lived down there in that area, or I had to take my child to school down there. I've got little girls here from school, and I explained to them what was going on in the county, and they was like, yeah, Ms. D., let's do it. So they're here watching too. This is not just about the interchange or the industries. What about the future of Henry County? We want to make these students and these young people want to be here, so I want to make sure that in this moratorium that it says Infrastructure Improvement Plan. That's very different from a comprehensive transportation plan. So the impact fees that we will charge will go specifically towards the infrastructure instead of to the parks or to public safety, because we've already got those impact fees for that. But we need to make sure that we're getting some money for the infrastructure. And then it spelled out how, you know, which infrastructure projects we'll do in that. So make sure we change, we add a CIP, which is a comprehensive infrastructure plan.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, then we come to Commissioner Thomas.
Dante, you mentioned that we only had three rezonings in the last three years for M-one and M-two?
Yes, that was a quick research that we did before we could.
Okay, can you off the top of your head about the rezonings for residential and commercial? That's a lot.
To kind of give you a perspective, from January, January this year till now, we've seen approximately twelve hundred to thirteen hundred rooftops approved the rezoning process.
Okay, so this is the minimum amount of rezonings, but this ordinance is, this resolutions based on that. I think we need to look at all of them as a whole. All of them impact our traffic, the residential, commercial, and warehouse. So I would, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to amend the resolution, include all three of them.
And that's good, because if it's done in three months or six months, what the reason that we're doing the moratorium is to expedite the process to get some work done. You know, if everybody's upset about the moratorium, maybe it'll be done in three months. It says not to exceed twelve months, it can be done in three months. So if we say all industries, and that's going to get staff or get a committee together to say what we're going to do about one fifty-five, what are we going to do about Western Parallel Connector, I'm not afraid of that. So we can do whatever, whatever the board wants to do to get this done, we need to do it. The other thing is that we mentioned about the rezoning of the warehouses, and on nineteen forty-one, we have something called the overlay district. So where that mega site is, even though we're looking at the mega site, you cannot put an industrial warehouse in certain areas in the county because of the overlay district. So we need to educate ourselves, we need to educate ourselves extensively so that we know all the laws and rules and ordinance of our county.
Excuse me, so Commissioner Wilson, you still have the floor. Any other comments?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, now it's Commissioner Thomas's turn. Thank you.
I want some clarification, if I could, Madam Chair. You stated that it is time to submit our priority list, I think, for roads and construction. Is that to the A R C that you're referring to?
Yeah, I'll let the staff to kind of talk about the process.
And when is that date? When are they due? That's very important. And to the tip, I want to know when this is due. And let me hear that first, and then I can make a follow-up question to that.
So the Atlanta Regional Commission will have a call for projects in August, and what we typically will do is bring to the board a list of projects that are being recommended for inclusion in the tip. Now, the Transportation Improvement Program or Plan is a six-year plan, meaning that over the course of those six years, the project is expected to be completed. One of the things that I've heard a lot of conversation about today is the number of projects that we do have in the tip, and we do have quite a few projects that are in the Transportation Improvement Program for Henry County, but the terms and, or the periods in which those projects are being constructed are what is, appears to be some concern for some of the board members.
And you're saying that's due in August and not in July?
No, ma'am, the call for projects should be in August.
Should be in August?
Yes, ma'am.
Please clarify that for me. And again, even if it's in August, this is now June. My question is, with that date so close at hand, when are we having the workshops that we will not be up here doing the same thing again? To know exactly what we're going to submit to A R C, so we will not have to hear again, A R C is waiting on Henry County to prioritize their list of what they want to do. I've heard that two or three times, that one of the reasons we've not gotten some things done is because that has not been done. So I'd like to have clarification on the process, when are we having a workshop, the funding, so that we will be, have that done timely and not waiting to the very last minute to get it done.
So let me just make sure I clarify the tip. Your Transportation Improvement Program or any of your transportation projects that you are seeking state and/or federal funds with, you don't have to put your local projects in the tip, unless you are in the future going to ask for state or federal funds. So when A R C has their call for projects, our project list is certainly based on a list of priorities, because it comes from our SPOSS program. What we try to do is look at projects in which we've already identified funding sources so that we can include those projects in this project list. But we can certainly, what we will do is bring to the board sooner rather than later a list of projects for a workshop for consideration by the board, so that we can make sure that the projects that are being submitted are in line with the wishes of the board.
Thank you.
You're done? Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
We came together and identified, I think, five to seven roads about a year ago to be submitted for the tip. And we haven't gotten any feedback on if those roads are going to be funded, have we?
So yes, you are correct. There were a list of projects, and honestly, Commissioner, that is the list of road projects whenever we're asked at a staff level what our priorities are.
Every year.
So we did receive funding for Rock Quarry Road for the design only, and help me, right-of-way only. And then we received funding for State Route eighty-one for right-of-way only. Those were the only two projects that we received funding on out of the five. Now, if you remember, in the budget, for two years, we've carried those funds. If you remember, under the fund balance, we have a amount that shows tip improvements. When the resolution was approved by the board, it required us to go ahead and pull those funds out. So those are the two of the five.
So why do we get just right-of-way only? What about design or construction? How come we haven't seen anything on that? And what about the other, the other projects that were submitted?
Yes, Commissioner, we, back, I want to say twenty fifteen, there was a call for projects, and that's when we submitted Rock Quarry and also State Route eighty-one, and we received the one point two million for each one for the design. So the last call of projects, that's when we submitted the seven projects, and out of the seven, we just received right-of-way for just Rock Quarry and also for State Route eighty-one.
The other routes, they just, they just stay on the list?
It's A R C, yeah, it's A R C who approves. We submitted the applications, but we only received for those two projects.
So then, so then, if we're talking about getting together and picking more projects, why would we put more projects on the list when we already have five, five projects currently already on the list that we haven't received funding for?
And that's, that's what we're saying in terms of projects, that list continues to be the priority list of projects that we're submitting. I hear you, the A R C gets to decide on when those projects or if those projects will be funded. And whenever we submit projects, we ask for the entire amount, from right-of-way, design to construction, but we're at their graces to determine if they're going to provide funding for those projects. And if, whenever I'm asked if it's by GDOT official, we always list the exact same projects, because that's what the board approved. And until the board approves something else, that's what we will continue to submit.
Commissioner Clemens?
I think that we keep going back to the same thing. We've got projects on the list, everybody in this whole county knows what the projects are. Western Parallel, one fifty-five, Jonesboro Road, and the list of other ones, there's public record. The issue is not that we don't have projects on the list, the issue is that we don't have the money. The issue is that we've not gotten enough attention from the state to say, Henry County is serious, and we want our roads done now. And I think that Commissioner Wilson made a good point. If we really want to do, get something done, then we should add all industries and just say, if it takes six months to have those conversations, or twelve months, or three months, or two weeks, we need to just say, we're serious about our infrastructure plan, and we need help, and we're going to do A, B, C, D, F, G. And part of that is, like you said, they want to know what are we bringing to the table as well, and I think those impact fees will help, and even the T-SPOSS that we've talked about. So, you know, I don't think that they'll support it either way, but let's try it.
Madam Chair, may I make a minor correction? Earlier, I said there were three in the last three years as far as industrial rezonings. I cross-checked the list that I have in front of me, there were two. One of those in District one at the southeast corner of Bill Gardner, one fifty-five, was C-three.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
If I understand you correctly, Madam Chair, you're saying now you're in position to do a serious lobbying for these dollars with A R C? If that's what I heard from you?
I will say that what you, what I have been doing is speaking specifically about the projects that we have and the need, and the help that we need. What I have done at the table at the Atlanta Regional Commission, as these tip amendments are being made, I am digging deeply and working with the staff as to where these are in the pipeline. The thing that has been interesting is even at the A R C, I am also working with the other board members so that they understand that Henry County is going to come to the table with a serious, major plan on infrastructure and specifically transportation, because that's where our citizens and our board is focused on. Now, the challenge that we're experiencing is that we're hearing from individual commissioners or individual cities here in Henry County, so we have a disjointed message when we're asking for help. Now, in the past, I will say that the representation that Henry County has had has not been favorable for transportation. I do remember when Henry County was even awarded seventy-two million dollars to get some help, but again, we had poor partnerships with these organizations. So, yes, I am definitely in every opportunity, A R C, working with GDOT. Now, will definitely do so even at the economic development to look for opportunities, but I've got to represent this board. I cannot do it alone. I've got to represent Henry County, which includes the county and the cities for a joint message.
Well, that's basically what I'm getting at, when it comes down to our representation at A R C.
Yes.
Are you stating to us that when you're there, you're also representing the voice for the cities as well?
That's exactly right, because that's exactly what's happening. All of the transportation, the roads that we have, doesn't stop in the county lines. It crosses into the cities, and it crosses all across here. Many of these state roads, which will get the state and federal funding, does not stop in a territorial jurisdiction. So that's why the major thoroughfares are the ones that identify traffic volume, crashes, fatalities, all of these things. So it is, it's got to be a Henry County representation.
Well, my reason for questioning, Madam Chair, is to understand the process of everyone else, because it alludes me as to why this conversation is not going beyond this board. And this board has not been involved with the cities and others to determine these priorities and how we will have them lobby it down at A R C, and as you stated, needing more than you to make it happen. And it sounds like, again, we've got some homework that has to be done so that that voice will be heard in that particular arena to get us what we need in Henry County. Because I am concerned, again, as Commissioner Clemens has stated, that these roles have been on the list you're telling me now for years with very little impact from the state or federal government to pull it through. Which again, helps me to understand why there's such a push to take the money that we have now available to work within this county to make us better directly. Because waiting and telling a citizen who's sitting in traffic thirty, forty minutes, well, your help is coming twenty thirty-four. No, your help is coming twenty thirty-two. Well, I'm sorry, your help was scheduled for twenty twenty-five, but it's been pushed out now to twenty thirty-six. The citizens are not going to hear that, when we have four and five and six million dollars that's sitting on a table that we can go to certain areas and start relieving some of the traffic problems that we have here for them. And it sounds like we really need to look back again to see what we can do internally to help our citizens, and then go outbound with you to A R C to make some things better for Henry County.
Very good. All right, many other, okay, Commissioner Wilson, and then I'll have a comment, and then we'll see if there's other comments.
I don't want to pass up the opportunity to recognize that GDOT had a meeting here about a month ago, and they brought projects to us to what they're going to be doing in the next six or eight, ten years. And that was twenty-two, twenty-four projects, that's correct? That's already been funded? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So then were the widening of forty-two from I-six seventy-five to McDonough, city limits, is that correct?
That is correct.
And widening of Rock Quarry Road?
Rock Quarry?
Was that part of it?
Yes, Rock Quarry was on there, yes, sir.
Okay, so there are some projects that they, that they did bring us, and so we need to, we need to recognize those projects have been put on the books, so.
All right, you're done, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Did you say those projects were funded eighteen years out from now? Is that what you were saying?
There is, GDOT has a work program, and what they presented to us during their town hall meeting was about twenty, twenty-two projects that over a span of several years, yes, sir.
Well, any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, I think this really good discussion has really highlighted some opportunities that we have. And so I'm in full support of what Commissioner Thomas is really focused on and highlighted, is that we need to get our act together for Henry County at every level. Me, myself, this board, the cities, working with every other agency in this county that's impacting our development as we go forward. These are growing pains, so we got to get through the growing pains, and I hope that we can do that together.
So are there any other questions or comments on the, from the board before we move towards a motion? Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
I have another comment.
Okay, if you will make a comment, then we'll come back to your motion, yes?
I think that the unity message has been going on for three and, almost three and a half years, and I think we need to move to a message of action. Unity has not gotten anything done, and not even the unity. So I think that we've got to get to a message of action. And I thought about what you said, Commissioner Wilson, about doing the moratorium on all industries. And there was a comment that was made that if we do a moratorium on the warehouses, that it would bankrupt our economy and that it will put the county in a bad light. This moratorium is not to do that, and I think to go to the extreme to say every industry, a medical facility that's coming in, a new hospital that's being built, a technology company, GE coming in, or anything like that would be a bad move. And I think it would be an intentional way to make this moratorium look like it's a bad thing. And I think that, you know, a lot of people would like to see this made into a bad thing, but the intentions behind this is, was never an intention to call out warehouses or call out a certain industry. But it was because that is an area of our county that has gotten the most attention from the state and the worst impact on our communities is that area. So that's why we chose that area to address. So I think to say, nobody's going to come in and build, is really harsh. It is mean-spirited, and I think it comes from a spirit, a mean place, but I want so much to make sure that something gets done, but I don't think that's the route to go. So I will say that, to say that or to do that would send a mean-spirited and a bad impact on the county as a whole.
Okay, excuse me, okay. Commissioner Wilson, you got a comment?
I'm good. I'm just going to go ahead with my motion.
Okay, we want to hear from Commissioner Holmes, and then we'll move towards the motion.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I keep hearing the word unity. However, disagreement doesn't mean that there's no unity. We all were elected by our constituents, and our constituents put us in these seats to vote their interests. And just because I disagree with a certain commissioner on a certain issue doesn't, doesn't mean that, you know, we're not colleagues and we're not going to work together. Just because I disagree with you on this particular issue doesn't mean I'm going to disagree with you on the next issue. So I, you know, I would, I would just like to say, if we can just drop that, you know, that word, we're not unified because we disagree on a certain topic, because I think that, that creates dysfunction within the board and sends a negative message out to the, to the people of this county. So I think people want to see us disagree and fight on their behalf. I'm pretty sure you guys have constituents that support the warehouse community. We have constituents that are tired of warehouses and the semi-trucks, and they're tired of driving on, on roads with potholes in it. So we're fighting for those constituents. If you guys are fighting for your constituents, that's, that's, that's a good thing. I'm okay with that. I have no problem with it. But we'll just have to agree to disagree, but I don't, you know, after, after this meeting, as in every single meeting, I get up, I shake everybody's hand. You know, we leave this, we leave this meeting as friends, and we leave unified. We're all, we're all on the same team, but we don't have to agree with, you know, every single topic to work together. And that's just how it's been for me for the last decade. So, you know, I sat on this board. So, you know, I sat on this board when I was the only Democrat. Now, we have three Democrats on the board. And so, you know, the tide has shifted. Just like I had to work with all Republicans, you guys have to work with three Democrats. So, you know, there, there are things we can do to work things out. You know, there are some things that I may need, that I may have to work with you guys on and vice versa. But it does not mean that this board is dysfunctional just because we don't agree on certain issues.
Okay, we'll, I'll hear from Commissioner Clemens and I'll call for a question.
Patrick, I just want to make sure that we do things in order. The chair just called for the motion, so you can't go back and say, "I called, I made a motion before the motion was called for." Robert's rule of order. So, since she has called for a motion, I, I want to make a motion. So, that motion, somebody tried to make a motion before it was even called for a motion. That's not proper, Robert's rule of order. So, I want to make sure that, let's get it right, board. Let's start being in order with everything that we do. And so, she's just called for the motion, so I just want to make that clear so we don't go back and, and, and try to call, say, "I called for a motion already when the motion was never called for."
And, and I, I do agree that's proper. I didn't, I'm not sure that there was a motion. I didn't catch it one way or the other.
Just making sure that the chair knows I'm calling. I'm asking to make the motion since she's now called for the motion.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get clarification because what happened, Commissioner Wilson did make a motion and allowed, and allowed conversation and it didn't get a second, which is probably, which is the right rules of order. We should have just stopped the whole thing and had a motion, but now we're kind of, so I'm just looking for guidance.
If we want to get deep into Robert's rules of order, while you're discussing an item, before there's a call for a motion, there would have to be a motion to suspend discussion and then a motion made.
Yes.
So, I think if, if that's how we want to go, I do think that motion was probably premature. We've never gotten that deep into Robert's rules of order before, but there's no reason we shouldn't at some point.
Well, very good and thank you for the consistency, no problem. Okay, so the floor is now open for a motion.
I would like to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for the moratorium on the industry site and then the information that's been presented for us today, but to add that we would be doing it in order to also have a comprehensive infrastructure plan in place for the roads. So, that was in the, the whereas where you had the C, C T P.
Okay, we have, have a motion, there's a second. Have a second, any further discussion? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second and a comment, any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? I would like to now make a motion. We just did it a few minutes ago. I motion that we move forward with the comprehensive infrastructure plan, that we also include a meeting, as it has been recommended, that we actually pull together everyone who's involved regarding transportation. I also include in that that it does include a committee, as has been recommended, that will bring a report back. And I agree that this should not be a moratorium against any industry in our county until we go through the due diligence of coming up with a comprehensive infrastructure plan to move forward. I do agree that this plan should include the development impact fee that has been recommended. And again, as we continue to move forward, I just think that that would help us to move to action because you're right, there's been a lot of discussion and it's time to act. So, I make that motion with those modifications. Is there a second? Okay, here and now? Not a second? It is dead, so thank you. Okay, all right, well, thank you much. We'll now move into the next item, which is from our county attorney. And it is regarding an ordinance regarding setting the agenda process. And it's an informational-only update.
This feels a little anticlimactic now, I think. So, we've had, your staff has had a lot of questions put to it. Many of you, if not all of the board, has at some time or another asked this question, "How does the agenda get set?" And the way the agenda gets set today is sort of the result of, I think, years of a, a, just a practice of doing it the way it happens. And sometimes it's hard to answer that question because there really aren't any rules or ordinances that govern exactly how your agenda is set. So, I have drafted and am here today to present to you a proposal, a proposal for an ordinance that would essentially codify the way our ordinance process works. And this proposed agenda ordinance that you have is, for the most part, what we do with some minor modifications. And you should all have it in your packets and I want to walk through it. I'm not going to walk through every single section of it, but I'm going to sort of walk through the, the key points and the highlights of how it works. The first page contains definitions. And the one I want to point to you on page one that I do think is important is the very first one, which is an agenda calendar. So, as it stands today and as we're proposing to continue, at the beginning of each, each year, the county clerk prepares an agenda calendar. And there's one that exists now that's prepared that sets forth all of the deadlines that I'll be talking about as I walk through this process. But what we want to do is impose by ordinance that this board establishes deadlines for when agenda items are submitted, when various versions of the agenda are published, when your county staff meets to meet and discuss and review proposed agenda items. So, that's the first one I want you to be aware of. The next definitions I want you to be aware of are on the next page and it's the last two. And what we're proposing is that each agenda item lists a presenter, which would in this instance be me, the person that gets up and presents the agenda item. And each agenda item also lists a sponsor, which is essentially the person or the department that is bringing the agenda item before the board. An example would be a planning and zoning item. That agenda sponsor would be the Department of Planning and Zoning. If it is an agenda item that is specifically requested by a county commissioner, the commissioner would be the sponsor. And then the county manager would assign someone to be the presenter of that item. So, the sponsor and the presenter could be two different people. So, with those definitions in mind, here is how we envision the process working. Pursuant to the calendar that is created each year by the clerk, there is a deadline for the submission of agenda items. And if that agenda item is submitted by staff, it would include all of the backup information that you receive in your agenda package and some that actually doesn't make it into your agenda package. That entire package, which would include the proposed resolution, the little fiscal analysis that you get, a sign-off sheet for all your, all your key personnel, an executive summary and whatever budgetary information goes with it, has to be submitted to the county clerk on or before the deadline set forth in that calendar. If it is a commissioner-initiated item, and this is, I know, going to be an important one for the board, if a commissioner wants an item on the agenda, the commissioner need only tell the county manager. Tell the county manager, "I want this item on the agenda." The county manager or someone that the county manager designates will then create that agenda package. But it will likewise go through the same process that we've always called red folder. I don't mention red folder by name in this, it just seems too casual of a, of a term for an ordinance. But the county commissioner makes a request. The county manager or whoever county manager designates will reduce that request to writing, will create a resolution and whatever backup information is necessary to put it through the process. Likewise with proclamations, proclamations would be handled essentially how they are now, but we want them submitted in enough advance that they get on every version of the agenda. And presentations, when, when there are requests for presentations from departments and agencies that work with the county, those would likewise go through the same process. If they get submitted before the agenda deadline or the submission deadline, they would appear on the appropriate agenda for consideration. On page four, each agenda item shall include the identification of the sponsor of the item. Now, it was important, and if you look under the section that says identification of sponsor, I think it's important that we point out that just because you sponsor an item does not mean you necessarily support the item. Sometimes it's just time for the board to vote on something. Whether staff is standing in front of you wanting you to approve it or wanting you to deny it is kind of irrelevant. But sometimes we reach a point, your county staff reaches a point where we need the board to vote to tell us to continue, not to continue, or to tell us which way to go. So, the sponsor of, of an item does not have to be someone who supports the item. Maybe it's just someone that needs this question answered. We then talk about the presenter. And likewise, the presenter of an item doesn't necessarily support the adoption of the ordinance or the resolution. The support, the presenter is simply the person that's going to stand in front of you, like I'm doing today, and present it to you. And we impose some obligations on the presenter in this, in this proposed resolution. First of all, they have to prepare all of the documentation that goes with it. And that may be done in conjunction with other departments or outside agencies, but they're essentially responsible for making sure all of the documentation that you need to consider something is presented to you. They are required both at the, what we call in this ordinance, the agenda review meeting, which we refer to as the red folder meeting. They're responsible for being there, describing the item and answering questions. And then they're responsible for standing in front of you and doing the following. They are required to present to you a full, accurate and objective explanation and analysis of the agenda item, a full, accurate and objection, and that, objective analysis of the fiscal impact, a summary of objections to or concerns about the agenda item that were expressed in the red folder meeting. So, the reason we put that in there, if we meet in the red folder meeting and management has some significant questions about, "I don't know where we're going to get the money for this" or "This is going to impact another program," we want to make sure the board is made aware of that, that you know that there are objections or concerns raised. And if it's appropriate, because there are some, there are some items that are presented to you with recommendations of approval or denial, primarily your planning and zoning items. Your planning staff will typically have a recommendation of approval or denial. It's not the presenter's job to urge you to adopt something, although on occasion, I think we do get up and urge you to adopt something. That's generally when we need to meet a deadline or something's, just has to happen. But that's not the duty of the presenter. The duty of the presenter, we're not like, see, we're in court. We're handing this to the board, want to make sure you have all the information you can vote on. So, that's sort of the players in the process. Now, how we have this set up to work, again, beginning on the very bottom of page four, we, the first draft of the agenda we will refer to is the preliminary agenda. The preliminary agenda will include everything that made it to the clerk in time to get on the preliminary agenda. If, if an agenda item was submitted and it has everything it has to have, it will go on a preliminary agenda. That preliminary agenda will be brought over to the next page to the agenda review meeting, which was the red folder meeting. And during that meeting, just like we do now, it'll be sort of run by the county clerk. The county manager, county finance director, the county attorney and each cluster leader will meet to review and discuss each agenda item as presented. If it's approved by everybody, everybody will sign off on it. Now, that sign-off item, I want, want to make sure you understand, doesn't necessarily mean everybody supports it. It simply means for the county finance director that funds are in place. It means for the county manager that the process was essentially followed. It means for me that it's legal. So, I, it's an effort to sort of check each box that it's ready to go in front of the board. And that's really the purpose of that red folder meeting, is to flush out questions and concerns and make sure that it's ready to go in front of the board. After the red folder meeting ends, there is yet another agenda presented and that is called the proposed agenda. So, we narrow it down to what's going to get in front of this board. The proposed agenda, again, would include everything that the county management staff signed off on. And that proposed agenda is the agenda that you ultimately see. It will be sent to you for review. It will be eventually published. And then it will be brought to the board at the beginning of a meeting for the board to approve. And once you approve the agenda, it becomes the agenda. Now, the, we specifically put on the very last page, the proposed agenda by the board by majority vote. You can adopt it, you can amend it, you can add things to it, take things off it. You can change the order of things presented, are presented on. But that's the, sort of the, the final say on the agenda. It's not an agenda till you approve it. It's a proposed agenda. We have, I, I don't know that we've always done this, but I, I think of late, we have had some commissioners come to red folder meetings. You're all welcome, even if we don't adopt an, an ordinance like this. We, we welcome commissioners at red folder meetings. And in fact, the schedule for all of the meetings will be shared with all of the board members, so you'll know when all these things happen. So, that's the proposal we've, we've put into place. We're quite certain this is going to take some work. You know, creation of the agenda is, becomes at times a difficult thing. And we want to make it, we want to put into place a set of rules. So, when we get a question that says, "Why is this on the agenda?", we can turn around and say, "This is why, because it followed the process." We're not wedded to anything in here and that's why we're doing it as a discussion item. Take your time, think about it, look at it. Obviously, it's not going to be the ordinance till this board votes to approve it. I'm happy to take any questions or comments if you have any.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
Patrick, it sounds like this is an effort to attempt to create a binding agenda. And you're shaking your head right because that's exactly what it's doing.
Right.
I don't think that we need to create, or create a bylaw for something. And it goes back to Robert's rule of order. I don't know, you know, several of us have probably been on boards before or understand, has already created how you can do something on an agenda. This is an attempt to shut people up, stop people from bringing things to the agenda. So, I don't know, and they want to then have the commissioner's name who brought it. See, I don't care, if I bring something, I'm bold enough to say, "This is a commissioner-deed item." I don't hide behind items that I bring. So, somebody brought this to you. And whoever brought this to you needs to read Robert's rule of order. You can use Toastmasters. There are several things out there that are commonly used of how you set an agenda. You can walk it on the day of, you can amend agenda, you can bring it in the middle of the agenda. I mean, it's already set. You can't shut us up or stop us from bringing things to the agenda by trying to put something in place. I don't have to come to a red folder meeting. If there's an urgency for this community and I bring it here, you all can vote it down. But I don't think that we should create a bylaw, a constitutional law that goes against Robert's rule of order. Because this does.
Right, and, and that's a really good point. And what, what this ordinance does not do is prevent the board from doing whatever it wishes with the agenda once we meet. Now, we, we already have a limitation on us that's outside of Robert's rule of order.
Can I finish, Patrick?
Absolutely.
Because I've asked before about who can bring things to an agenda. Sherri, did I not ask this several times ago? There is already rules in place for this county that who can bring, like a John Dossis and, and I'll just use any name. Somebody in the community might want to put something on the agenda. Anybody, you, you can't let anybody put something on the agenda and those are rules that are already in place. And so, whoever brought this need to go back and do like I did. Look at what's already out there and see what's wrong with it. And if something is wrong with it, let's fix what we have. But anybody can't put things on agenda. So, this is about the board. Because legally, only certain people can put things on the agenda. And they're supposed to be, Sherri, when we looked it up, what was it? They had to be a, elected, I mean, a member of the board or-
Department.
A department head, okay? So, this is about the board.
So, here's what the most recent-
So, that's why to even bring this thing from the Development Authority to us. Legally, if they had a, I would have talked about what was legal because legally, it's already set. If you're not a department head, you're not supposed, or a commissioner, you're not supposed to be adding things to the agenda.
Well, this board is the only, is the only, this entity is the only entity that has the right to adopt, amend or modify an agenda. What we're looking at is that pre, the process that happens before it comes to you. Now, there is one important thing you need to realize. The state, when it changed the law last year, the, or year, three, three years ago now, that House Bill five fifty-four that you often hear referenced, this is what the law now tells us about the agenda. And this is part of the reason we do, I think it would be a good idea to have something in place. What the law that we're bound to follow now says is this. "The agenda for each member of the Board of Commissioners shall be established by the county clerk after consultation with the Board of Commissioners, chairperson, county attorney and county manager." That's the law we're supposed to follow. I don't know what that means any better than anybody else knows what that means. What we try to do today to comply with that law is we send that agenda out early. And that agenda goes out, board members all have an opportunity to review it. And here's where, here's what we don't know the answer to because there's no law. what we don't know the answer to, because there's no law. So, if an agenda item is put on there, even before it gets published, a county commissioner calls and says, "I want that off." I don't know if that item should come off or not.
It should come before the board, and we vote on it then. That's what the law says.
That's right. The only way the agenda, now, the law doesn't say what goes on that sheet of paper. The law doesn't say what goes on that sheet of paper that's presented to you. That's simply someone making a proposal, here's what we think is ready for you to vote on. And what we want to try to avoid is the perception or the belief or the concern that your staff is responding to one commissioner and not another on putting things on the agenda. We want to have a clean process in place. So, if somebody says, "I want this on the agenda," then county management will do all of those things, but if a board member wants it on the agenda, all you need to do is make a motion when the agenda is presented. "I want to add a resolution to do this," and it will, it's part of the agenda. It may not have all of that information with it, it may not have the agenda packet and the executive summary and the fiscal analysis, may not, it may not have that stuff with it, but it will get on the agenda if the board approves.
But, Patrick, the law says that we can add anything to the agenda.
That's right.
Now, what happens is, it should be added to the agenda because the law says that it's supposed to be added to the agenda.
That's right.
When a staff person does not put it on there, they've broken the law. Second, when it gets up here, if the board doesn't want it, somebody who didn't want it don't have to hide behind the telephone said, "Take it off." Just make the motion at that time. "I want to take off the moratorium and then let us vote in public." See, we got to stop doing stuff behind and make it public.
Here's the, here's the, you're absolutely right about that with one small exception. No individual commissioner has the legal authority to do anything with respect to the agenda. It takes, it takes all of them.
Takes a vote.
Right? So, if an individual commissioner calls the day before the agenda and says, "I want this on the agenda."
They just walk it on.
We don't put it on, and that's exactly what we're saying, is we, you retain, we're not taking that right away from you.
Right.
Because we can't, and we shouldn't. The agenda belongs to this board. If there's something that enough of you want on the agenda or off the agenda, if you want to change the order of the agenda items, it's done by the majority of this body. What we're talking about is that piece of paper that sits out at that little thing, how do we get that piece of paper?
It has to be published in the paper.
That's right, but it's how does that piece of paper get generated? And that's what this is designed. All, everything up until the last paragraph of page six gives staff instruction about how to create that piece of paper, because the board as an entity isn't involved in the creation of that piece of paper. That happens at the staff level. And what we're trying to do is put into process, put into place a process for the staff to follow to create those sheets of paper.
I wonder who did this, I'm going to ask that in a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, well, Commissioner Clements, you still have the floor. What other questions you have?
I'm glad this is information-only.
Yeah, and that's the reason we did it this way, is I don't, I'm not suggesting-
But you mentioned that y'all was going to keep working on it and trying to do it. Before y'all say that this is, I mean, this would have to come before the board, but I just, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I mean, this, and we did it as an ordinance precisely for that reason. You should not delegate, you should not limit the way that ordinance, or we should not, we, your staff should not limit the way agendas are created, you should. We want to give, this is your process, we want to make sure you have input and direction. We got to start somewhere. It's got to start somewhere, and we're not saying this is the way it has to be, which is precisely the reason we're presenting it to you. I'm not saying this is the one I want you to adopt. What I'm saying is, here's something to start with. Let's look at this, let's see if it needs to be changed, let's see if you like it, if you don't like it.
Any other comments, Commissioner Clements?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Patrick, I like the process the way it is. Let's move on to the next issue.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments? Because I had one comment regarding this. I don't have a problem with the process. The only thing is, I just do believe that the exhibits need to be presented in a decent time so that you'll have a good time to review that. That's the biggest thing that I would say that needs to be improved, so that, again, the due diligence can be done, the questions can be asked. I mean, getting things the day of or, you know, last minute, I mean, those are the challenges that I think really needs to be improved. Okay. All right, so, any other questions or comments from the board? All right, we'll now move to the next item, and it too is an informational-only item, and it is regarding the discussion regarding an industrial community improvement district at I-75 Industrial Quarter.
This item likewise is a discussion-only item. As you may be aware, for the better part of a year, the Development Authority has been engaged in the process of creating a new community improvement district for an area shown on this map. And to put it in perspective, this is Interstate 75, Highway 155 looks like this, so the 155 exits up here. This is Greenwood Industrial Parkway. This is Highway 2342. King Mill Road is here. This is the proposal that was sent to county manager and I to present to you, and we're doing it again. We're going to do this in steps. We're going to have you review it, consider it, and be aware of it today, and then you'll vote to adopt it at some point in the future. So, to give you, if any of you don't know what a community improvement district are, I think for the most part you do, but essentially, it is, it is like, it is something between a mini-government and a really, really good homeowners' association, like somewhere between those. They are, for the most part, voluntary, so if a district is created, that district can assess itself a millage rate, and that millage rate, the revenue generated by that assessment and that millage rate, can be used for improvements within the district. So, what you have in front of you is a district that looks like this, that's all the green and orange parcels would be included within the district, and it would have the ability to assess a millage rate up, I think, to five mills for improvements within that district. So, the reason there are multiple colors, there's a green, there are green properties and orange properties. In order to create a CID, you have to have a majority of owners, you have to have 50% plus one of the unique property owners, which means if I own three parcels within the district, I'll only get one vote. You also have to have ownerships wanting the CID or consenting to the CID that represents 75% of the value of all of the property within the CID. So, this map was drawn to ensure that both of those qualifications are met. And what you see are green parcels, which are the consenting parcels. The orange parcels are the non-consenting parcels. Even though they're non-consenting, they would become part of the CID under this proposal. The blue parcel is property owned by Norfolk Southern, and we're going to suggest that that should come out, but that's something I think we're going to have to resolve between now and the next board meeting, when y'all consider it. The, I'm sorry?
That wasn't in, that wasn't, this wasn't on the original map.
Yeah, I don't know, this is, I saw one map shortly before this one that was slightly different. I have no idea what the, what any original map, that wasn't something that was shared with me. I don't know if Sherry was ever given an original map either. But this is what's presented at this point, this is what exists at this point. So, the process going forward from here will be, the tax commissioner has to certify that that district contain, or that within that district, 50% plus one of the unique property owners have consented, and ownership representing 75% of the value has consented. When he makes that certification, which he will do imminently, when that certification is made, a resolution is then presented to you to create the CID. Once you vote to create the CID, it exists. The CID then meets, they create their own board, and they have the authority to assess their own, their own millage rate, which wouldn't happen at this point until next year. It's too late for them to jump through all the hoops and assess a millage rate this year. Now, in the audience, and I think I saw her earlier, there she is, the Development Authority, this is not something that either Sherry or I'd crafted, I think this is something that we wouldn't, wouldn't have done because it's not within our collective wheelhouses, but the Development Authority retained a consultant called Nickelworks. Nicole, Nicole McGee-Hall is Nickelworks and her staff. This is her, this is her creation. She's here to answer any questions that you might have, if you have any primarily of a technical nature and what the CID does or will do. And we're here that, again, this, we just want you to have it, want you to be aware of it. We will probably try to have you vote on it at the next board meeting, because it didn't look like it was that big of an agenda when we looked at the last agenda. So, that's where it stands. Again, if you have any questions, any concerns, we're happy to address them. We will be working on the last couple of little issues over the next several days so that all of those we flushed out before you're called upon to vote.
Okay. Are, we've heard the presentation, are there any questions? Commissioner Thomas?
I want to know, has she or anyone had any updates on the parcels that you have listed as non-consenting at this point in time?
Good morning, Commissioners. You said an update from the non-consenting?
Do you have, have you had any further discussions or any updates on the parcels that are listed as non-consenting parcels? What has been the roadblock to getting them consenting to the CID?
We've been working on this for a while now, and the, I can't speak specifically to the parcels that you see on this map that are non-consenting, but I would just say there are a variety of reasons that are in any CID that is created, where people are saying that it may not be a business expense, or they may have an issue with paying the fee at the time. It could be that they would like to wait, and that could or could not be an option. I mean, obviously, Leonard is here, he may have had some communication, we've both had communication with the consenting and the non-consenting owners, but to know specifically about those, I would actually have to go back to our database to see if we have information. Sometimes, we're not able to reach them. I mean, there's just a variety of reasons why they may be non-consenting.
Well, I know that this was being worked on even before now with another group. So, this is an age project, and knowing that it's an age project, it would be very important for this board to know what are the, what's blocking or what are the concerns that we're not getting these other parcels involved in this, they have not consented to that, and there should be some history there, whether or not, like you stated, you stated, many things could be there, but if you've actually put forth some work to make this happen, we need to know what it is. What are those blocks there that's preventing them from consenting to the CID in that area? Because this didn't just happen, they've been working on this for a number of years.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen on the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Thomas, that is an excellent question. In some instances, while the actual tenant in the building, the company, is willing and recognizing the value, in some instances, there is an institutional owner, a large real estate investment trust, who really are looking at their bottom line, and so may be questioning the value of a CID, having not been a part of one previously. In some instances, at least in one isolated instance, we have had one REIT that told us flat-out, "We will not come in voluntarily, but if we're forced in, we're glad to be a part of." And so, sometimes, it's just the economics of it. And as Ms. Hall mentioned, it's not something that's symptomatic only to Henry County, but in community improvement districts throughout the state.
And just to add to that, the reason that the CID legislation, it takes into account the consenting being a 50% plus one, plus 75% of the value, and then you have the ability to sweep or drag, that's the non-consenting, only 25% of value, and they represent the 49%. So, let's just say you have 10, I used 11, actually, 11% consenting, then you have the ability to bring in the 10 people, but it has to match the formula. So, that's the information that we presented, not only to the attorney, the county manager, the tax commissioner, and the tax assessor's office, so they have all that information.
Well, I'm familiar with the legislation, looked at it extensively, and understand what you're saying, could be the different reasons for not participating. I was certainly hoping that you had some more specific information on these particular landowners as to what was preventing them, because usually, when they see the return on the investment as easily found in other areas, because CID's have been around for quite a long time, and there's a lot, quite a bit of data out there telling or showing the return on the investment for doing that, and the value of it. Just wanted to get an idea where their mindset was, but, I mean, we're fine, I understand the general statements, I understand the process, just trying to see what you've been able to gather as you went through this process specifically for Henry County.
Commissioner Thomas, that's a great segue to a point, to really clarify that this is the initial boundary, but the intent is for the work to continue to encourage additional property owners to consent to being a part of the CID. And to your point, I think one of the things that will help to accelerate that is when the initial board is formed and the initial priorities are established, because it's the board that does that. And my hope is that the county will be working part and parcel so that it's really a global perspective about the type of improvements that should be had, but then being able to take that. When this process started several years prior to my coming on board in Henry County, there were some aspirational projects that were listed and that were identified, and I believe that those aspirational projects were the hook to get a lot of the consenting property owners that we saw onboard. But until we complete the initial formation, the initial boundaries of the Community Improvement District, and actually have the board set and establish those hard priorities and objectives, it will make it much easier, I believe, once that is done.
So, are you putting forth, I'm sorry, are you putting forth, as you stated, some of the things that this board needs to address in order to be supportive of helping make this thing come forth, beyond the meaning and the process? Are you putting forth something that you need from us that we need to consider in helping this whole process?
The primary point, I think, that would be most helpful is the Board of Commissioners in the county having a clear set list of priorities, really, if we take two agenda items ago, a clear set list of priorities, because in the industrial area, as we all are aware of, the transportation infrastructure is key, whether it be the widening of Highway 155, whether it be a stoplight at Greenwood Industrial, whether it be a new interchange on I-75. The employers are really interested in seeing and knowing and understanding how these projects will move forward. And so, and so, again, once we have, I think it will help enhance the conversation and help the CID board establish their list of priorities, is knowing clearly what the county's priorities are as well.
So, basically, you're saying that what we are working on and talking about working on, you need us to get our plan out there for transportation, and you need us to get our infrastructure plan out there. You need these simple directions from us so you can use them as well as you're presenting to these landowners as to where we're going and what we're going to do.
It would be most helpful, and I would be remiss if I did not mention that other community improvement districts use the funding from the property owners for items such as security, physical improvements and things of that nature as well, as well as marketing.
Yeah, but I definitely think, based on the prior agenda items that were here, that the CID is going to be able to supplement in moving some of those transportation infrastructure projects forward, and that's the purpose, one of the purposes of the CID.
Thank you.
And I will be happy to research the information on those non-consenting property owners and submit that, so that you have any type of feedback that they provided to us.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Clements and Holmes, I have a question. Commissioner Clements?
I just want to commend Leonard and Nicole for getting us to this point. It's almost three years that I know you guys have been working on it, and we've had some changes with the Development Authority, and thankful that we at least have the majority that we need to be able to move forward with the CID. But knowing that area, I'm sure that when you do your research, you'll find that people who are, have a property there that are not part of the industrial area don't see the need to self-tax themselves if they don't see the project list of how it's going to benefit their business. So, I think that might be a good way, and we don't need them, I mean, you guys have got what you need, and that's what I was asking, Leonard, don't you have the numbers you need to move forward?
Yes, ma'am. We clearly have the numbers that we need to move forward, but for a property to be eligible, the property has to have, has to be a certain, is it a certain zoning? I don't want to get into-
It's not a zoning, it has to be a certain land use code, and so, anyone that we are approaching has to have that land use, so they're going to be industrial, commercial, office, or retail, so.
Yeah, but still, when we call it the CID for industrial use, that may, you know, that may be a different message, so just consider that-
Excellent point made, ma'am.
Yeah. Thank you. Consider that, because I know that looking at that map, because I know that area so well, that that corner at 75 is a restaurant.
Retail.
There is retail there, there is a car wash there, and they did not consent. If we look at, we're calling it the CID for industrial, if we just call it a CID something else.
Absolutely.
Then it makes a difference, and keep in mind, we want our community to be supportive of this. What we, what I learned real quick from Nickelworks is that once the CID board is formed, this board has nothing to do with it. We can't dictate those priorities. You really, if they say that you don't have a say-so, they don't have to listen to us. They are their own little government, so we need to make sure that we don't just give them a message of this is just industrial, because we've got a huge retail infrastructure down in that area that brings a lot of tax dollars to us as well.
You are correct, ma'am. That's an excellent point.
And we can, that was from three years ago, that was kind of what was discussed. The word industrial can be removed?
Yes.
That is not a hard thing to do at all.
That was my thing. I was running for office. I was like, no CID if it's industrial, no, but you gotta, you gotta make sure you make that change, because it's some good stuff behind it. We just need to get it right.
Okay. Commissioner Holmes?
It's my understanding that we're going to be bringing this particular CID to the board in the next couple of meetings. I'm going to ask, since we have it budgeted in this upcoming budget, that we bring 138 and Eagles Landing as well, and start working on, on improving those areas and the major corridors in those areas as well.
So Commissioner Holmes, you're going to see me glance over to Mr. Gibbs, because I know as a part of the mega site initiative along Highway 1941, we heard feedback from the commissioners, and as a part of that scope of work, there are some feasibility studies, some feasibility work about establishing additional CID's in Henry County, and I know for certain Highway 138 is one of the corridors, specifically Eagles Landing Parkway. I am not certain.
Where, where are we on those studies, Dante?
At that point, we are actively underway with our master planning project for the mega site, which also includes Highway 138, Fairview Road, 1941, 155, and a few other locations throughout the county for assessment as to the feasibility of CID's and TADS.
I would like, I would like to ask Nicole, are you in the TAD business as well, or just CID?
Uh, no, we do multiple economic development and community development initiatives. We worked with TADS in Douglas County before, and potentially in Forsyth County as well.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, well, my question was, Commissioner Clemens?
I would just like to ask the staff to consider amending the scope of work for Nickelworks so that we can move this quickly and expedite this rather quickly. I know that once you've been in this county, you've learned this county, and we don't have to discuss it now, I just want to put it out there that maybe we can look at amending the scope of work so that we can, when we vote on this CID, that we also add in that agenda item that we are going to begin the process for the other CID's as well. So just-
It's not between the Board of Commissioners and Nickelworks. It's a contract between the Development Authority and Nickelworks.
But the Development Authority would be doing the CID's for the other ones too, correct, or no?
No, ma'am.
Not necessarily, ma'am.
No, we would have to go through our procurement process for that.
The, the current-
Okay, well, Dante, please check on that CID from a 1941 perspective, and Nicole may be able to give you some information about that since she was on board at the beginning. I know that the Speedway, see, CID means that they self-tax themselves, and the Speedway wasn't willing and didn't really want to be self-taxing themselves again off the, on top of the taxes that the county already charged. So we need to make sure that we're not trying to drag someone into a CID that's really looking more for TADs. So Dante, please keep that in mind.
Sure.
Um, when we're talking about TADs versus CID's. Okay.
Okay, well, one comment. I do agree that we need to accelerate this. My question is, are we going to be able to hear that comprehensive plan of CID's and TADs as before we vote for this? Because we need to see all of that together as we're moving forward, because I know we've got budgeted funds, but I, I know that this is big. I don't want to hold this one up, but we still do, and I knew we had other CID's, and we've got to talk about TADs, so I don't know if we can even have a preview of what that looks like as we are voting on these matters.
Chair, I certainly don't think that that's something that we'll be able to accomplish under the current scope of work that's been assigned to Nickelworks. I know that with the mega sites, the work that's going on with TSW and Mr. Gibbs' offices, they're in the very preliminary interview process. I think some of you all have already had some interviews with that consultant team regarding the mega sites, and then they'll move on to some of the next steps, but I don't think we're going to be able to intertwined or at least report back to the board on all of them, because we haven't even begun the process of looking at TADs.
Okay. Well, again, I was just thinking about the comment just made about the CID for, for 138, and do Claire understand that that was, you know, not inclusive in the agreement that we have here? All right, well, I am in favor of moving and accelerating this, definitely based on the conversations that we've had, so. Would you, again, clarify, I know we in the budget had approved for budgeting exercise, so what I need to hear clearly is what are the expectations of the board? And what I've heard clearly is that, you know, you need to have us to submit some clear priorities, that we've got to vote, vote on this regarding the resolution to set it up, and so what else it is that this board would be expected to do?
Madam Chair, from a budget standpoint, the funds that we've contracted to pay Nickelworks, those funds are coming from the Development Authority. They are, we're using now non-county funds. I would be remiss if I did not state that when the CID was initially started, there were some additional county dollars that were used to pay a part, a portion of the initial scope of work for Nickelworks, but for, to get us across the finish line, there are some non, non-county funds that have been used. And in terms of next steps from a legislative standpoint, a resolution being placed in front of you for adoption, that target date is, Mr. Jalt-
Uh, would, at the next board meeting most likely, unless there's some reason to put it off for two more weeks to take care of some administrative things.
And once that is done, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hall, is that there is some say that the Board of Commissioner has, the Board of Commissioners has in terms of making one appointment to the Community Improvement District, but that appointment has to come, has to be a representative of a property owner that is in the Community Improvement District.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And I think, Chair, to, to help further answer your question, going forward, you know, what's it look like? Three months from now or six months from now, what does this board need to do? You don't know that until the CID forms itself and decides how it wants to go forward, but I think it's safe to say there's a new constituent that you should work with, and you should be prepared to discuss, partner, work with them, and them helping you achieve your goals and vice versa.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
And if I may, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to publicly thank and acknowledge Ms. Hall and Nickelworks Consulting, who continue to work with us through this for a very long period of time, so thank you very much.
All right. Well, and also, we want to say thank you on behalf of the board for the work that has come. And Leonard, we also want to commend you as well. I think this, you'll soon be relocating, and we just appreciate all of your hard work over the last 18 months. We want to publicly recognize and acknowledge you as well.
Thank you. It has been an absolute joy being a part of the Henry County community for the past 18 months. I wish it would be longer, but I wish nothing but the best for Henry County, her citizens, and the Board of Commissioners. God bless each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. We will now, ooh, do we need to take a break? We'll press on. I guess I'm hearing from the pleasure of the board to take a restroom break and please come back so that we can press on with the last couple of items. So we'll take a 10-minute break, and I'll set the clock that it's time for, so. Okay, well, we'll resume the meeting and move into our planning and zoning items, and we've got several annexations to discuss. And the first one is regarding the city of Stockbridge annexations, and we'll invite up Mr. Dante Gibbs, our Planning and Economic Development Director, to make that presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. The item before you is a notice of annexation we received from the City of Stockbridge regarding two tracks of land in District 5 located on Old Stagecoach Road. According to annexation law, if the city were to annex these two tracks into their incorporated boundaries, it would technically create an island, and the island would be, and I'll point to it on the map to the right. It looks like you can see it a little bit better. And giving that, given that technicality, there is a resolution objection that County Attorney has prepared specific to this annexation request that we received.
No, I'm good. So we distributed this morning to you a resolution objecting to the annexation of the two Stockbridge parcels precisely for the reason Dante mentioned. The, this parcel and this parcel, if they're annexed, that little gray parcel becomes an unincorporated island. The Georgia law does not permit a city to annex if it creates an unincorporated island. So the resolution directs that I notify the City of Stockbridge of that fact and do whatever else we have to do to make sure they comply with the law. Now, this is not an objection like a land use objection. This doesn't trigger arbitration or litigation or anything like this. This is simply, would simply be an unlawful act, in my opinion, if they were to proceed with the annexation. Now, there's nothing that would prevent them from annexing this parcel by itself or this parcel by itself, because by themselves, I don't think they would create an island. But it's the combining the two of them and annexing both of them that would create the island. So that's what the resolution before you does. If it, if the resolution's approved, I'll notify the City of Stockbridge. You know, we're not going to shake swords at them, or, you know, we have litigated in the past with Stockbridge over an improper annexation on that Jodico Road corner. I don't know. The board will have to make a decision if this one's important enough that the city disagrees and moves forward. The board will have to make a decision about how to deal with it.
Okay, well, this is a present. Any questions or comments regarding this annexation proposal? Commissioner Holmes?
Is this the same property that wanted to rezone to create a junkyard or some type of warehouse?
They, they did try to rezone for, I guess, a couple of years in a row, some years back. Don't recall it being a junkyard. I recall it being an M1 zoning that they were pursuing, but they tabled it several times over the course of a couple of years.
I thought this was like some type of junkyard or warehouse. That's why I wouldn't move forward with it. But I don't think I would have a problem with it if Stockbridge wants to, wants to move forward and annex this property into the city for that purpose. That would be on them, so.
Yeah, I'll say this, whether you object or not, I think it's unlawful if they annex both of those pieces, which means it wouldn't be an effective annexation, which could create an awful lot of problems down the road if there's permits and things issued. I would urge that at a minimum, we communicate with Stockbridge and say, y'all, y'all really need to look into this. Make sure you're not, not getting-
I'm okay with it, but I'm not, I'm not aga, I'm not against this annexation.
Okay, other questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner Thomas?
I'm not familiar with the piece of property. My question is, does this property touch the lines of the City of Stockbridge in any other fashion? That would be my question.
You might be able to see a little bit better here where that little corner and the corner here, they, it appears that they overlap sufficiently.
I know Stockbridge has holes around its city limits and so many other places, and you wonder how in the world that they get this piece of property but jump over that piece of property? Just trying to make sure there was some connectivity there.
And this honestly, this is exactly how that happened, is, is annexing people, annexing parcels without capturing, you know, this parcel that hasn't made a request. It would be much cleaner if the city would annex, if they want to get on this side, if they would go ahead and annex everything up that side, you wouldn't have that weird little, you know, it looks like a jack-o'-lantern's tooth. You know how you draw them out?
Okay. And question, what, what is the current land use for this, these parcels?
For the track to the north, Patrick, do you mind pointing, is C3 zone, and to its south is R8, residential agricultural. As far as future land use goes, we designate it from that C3 parcel down to the M1 parcel, future land use as commercial.
Commercial, okay. Okay, any other que, oh, so I heard the presentation, definitely the resolution is actually to object to this, correct?
Right, on the basis that it creates the island.
Okay, so at this time, if there's no more questions, the floor is now open for a motion.
So, well, I motion to allow Stockbridge to annex this into the city.
Second. You have a first and a second actually to allow the annexation. That's what's, okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, all right, well, it passes unanimously to allow the annexation. Okay, we'll move to the next one on the City of McDonough annexations. Again, we have a presentation. This is regarding one on Georgia Highway 2081, and we'll ask Mr. Gibbs to present that one as well, and-
Thank you, Chair. The annexation request we received from the City of McDonough is regarding a single track of land on 2081 at the I-75 interchange, formerly known as the Ruby Tuesdays, and there is a Waffle House, I believe, to the east of this parcel. Georgia, Georgia annexation law allows jurisdictions to, to incorporate existing islands or from existing islands. So technically, this track and the track to its east are existing islands, and so what the City of McDonough is actually doing is utilizing a provision in the annexation law, is OCGA 363692, that allows them to absorb from this island into the incorporated city limits. So there is no techni, technical objection in that they are meeting a provision in the annexation law to annex this track into their incorporated boundaries from an existing island.
And I'll show you, we included that resolution objecting based on looking at this map right here. This is the parcel that's being annexed. It would, if it's annexed, that parcel becomes an unincorporated island, which means it's surrounded on all sides by city. But as I zoom out on the map, this property is already part of an unincorporated island. Now, how that island came to be, I don't know. How that, how those annexations came to be, I couldn't tell you, but Georgia law specifically allows a city to annex within an island, even if it creates another island, as long as it's within that island. So this one, unlike the Stockbridge one, there's really no legal basis at all for us to be involved. They're not changing, there's no proposal to change the land use. They were annexing it under its existing land use.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, and I just wanted to clarify, I should have asked this earlier on the other one, but still, staff is recommending, what are your thoughts about this? Any thoughts?
Just presenting that there is no technical-
Okay.
-legal issue with it being annexed into the City of McDonough.
Okay, very good. Okay. So we've heard the presentation. Currently, the resolution states for an objection. The floor is now open for a motion.
There was no resolution.
Madam Chair, we don't need to, we don't need to have that resolution even voted on. I think you could just remove it from the agenda.
Okay.
Because there's no basis for an objection.
Oh, wait a minute, I just want to clarify, because I'm obviously a little confused. Okay, state again.
There's no need for this resolution because there's no basis for a legal objection.
Oh, okay. Hmm, okay. Okay, well, I think that concludes the presentations that we had on planning and zoning, and now we'll move to the public comments section, and I'll look over to the clerk to see who signed up prior to the meeting and allow each citizen to, be granted five minutes for public comments, and so how many do we have?
Chair, we have four public comment speakers today, Larry Maury, Phil Tony, Shante Vornado, and Kathy Rose.
Okay, so thank you. If you'll please come forward and state your name and, your name, please.
Larry Maury from McDonough. For about the last 20 years, I designed the first live, work, and play mixed-use development in Georgia. It's the only one that's ever been named Autobahn recipient. I've designed seven mixed-use developments. Three of them are recognized as being industry leaders. I don't try to proselytize that, but I, I know what I'm talking about when I say what I'm going to say. Three years from now, if you don't build another warehouse, I'm going to say, I'm going to say 18 months from now, if you just fill up what you got, you ain't going to be able to get off of 75 out here, because traffic's going to be choking you to death. I don't know if y'all remember Eagles Landing, but it almost killed Eagles- death. I don't know if y'all remember Eagles Landing, but it almost killed Eagles Landing. It did severely hurt it when y'all built that bridge and people couldn't get on and off 75. Traffic is something you, you plan on to start with, not restro. A tractor-trailer truck is seven cars. And when you try to get a traffic truck through a traffic corridor, that's seven cars. For instance, if you go to the BBNT where 20 comes in to 81, two tractor-trailer trucks there the other day completely shut down red light to red light, two, two trucks. And you come on across and come over the overpass on 81 like you're gonna come to 216, a truck tries to turn in there to that truck parking y'all okay, and it's at an angle. State allows none of that anymore. He tries to turn in there and he gets in that, and he gets sideways. And we sit there and we sit there for trucks and cars backed up from red light to red light over the overpass, which is one of the only two places you've got of getting over the overpass, the railroad tracks, in case of emergency. 18 months from now, those poor people that live on, south of town down at Locust Grove is gonna want to hang somebody for it. It gets, it's through. And those people going out 81 and out 20, it's gonna be a nightmare. That's all I'm gonna say about that. But, you write it down and date it and time it because today, I'm gonna be right. And 18 months from now, I'm gonna be right. So, just think about that. The second thing I tried to, I showed Mr. Wilson a few months, about a year and a half ago, y'all gonna build an amphitheater and a conference center somewhere. I know y'all. And I showed him a place right back here, right behind this building. It's got a, topography-wise, a perfect place for amphitheater. And you've got the land, the perfect place to build a conference center. You already own the land. You already got plenty of parking all the way around three sides, including Mercer. You've already got the infrastructure. You've got four ways of getting in and out in case you have a real nice conference or a real nice amphitheater. You can draw 30, 40,000 people if you can get them in and out. You've got the restaurants. You've got the hotels. You literally got everything right here. Anybody with, anybody, the law will tell you this. Now, I know what I'm talking about. Over 70%, I'm being conservative, of the problems with crime is within a five-mile circus of 675 and 75. I ain't taking nobody, I ain't going up there with my kids at night, and you ain't either. You bring, you do things at night like conf, you put it where you, there's a safety factor, there's restaurants, there's hotels, there's ways of getting in your car and getting out and in without blocking traffic. Now, if I don't know what I'm talking about, if you'll come go with me, I'll take you to North Augusta, South Carolina. And I went to the state and the federal government, and they stopped what they were doing and changed and built a $47 million interchange and four-lane road. And that was seven years ago, and today, they are so thankful they did that. Patton said it well. If you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And I'm gonna go further than the buck stops for y'all. You're the final authority.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maury.
If you don't stop planning, you gonna fail.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia. John, I hadn't, I hadn't heard you speak that much since you got elected, as you have today. Y'all were talking about when you should reclusive yourself. Ms. Thomas and Ms. Wood live in Eagles Landing. I was listening to the real estate expert back here when y'all were doing this. And then, y'all threw a scenario at your county attorney, which works for y'all. Y'all made the resolution, you voted, and y'all six voted. And then you, then the chair asked him, when I spoke up about you should reclusive yourself, you put him on a bad spot. That man works for you. He's wanting to keep his job. Naturally, he's gonna dance around all of that. But, anyway, just paying attention to what this lady said, which was supposed to be a real estate expert in, in y'all's neighborhood. They said that your average cost, that your average selling price of houses right now up there, the current price is $450,000. All right. New homes that they're proposing to put in are gonna be between $700,000 and a million plus. Okay. Now, and she's saying that it's gonna raise all the property values. So, if your house is worth $450,000, just say in a figure, and it jacks it up to $650,000, I'd say that was a gain. Now, I tell you what, previous commissioners have reclusive theirsself when, when it was involved. That's the, that's the honorable thing to do. Just like Ms. Woods was asked tonight to step down, reclusive herself. She refused. Y'all are not gonna, y'all are not gonna do it. That's unethical. Totally unethical. I know you're, you're still a rookie. You don't know. But, I'm telling you, from this point forward, you should look at things when it does involve you. You know, the scenario is, if you had reclusive theirself, it would have never passed, and you knew that. It would have never passed because nobody else on that board is gonna make a motion to accept it because it's in your district. And there's an unwritten rule that if it's in, in your district, they're gonna go along with you because if he needs, if Mr. Holmes needs something, you're gonna vote. If it's in his district and in your district, he's gonna return the favor, within reason, I think. But, you know, y'all need to, y'all need to think about the ethics and how people look at you. Y'all draw a salary for coming up here. You're paid to come. I, I do it because I care about the county. I have property here. I have family here. I have everything. Now, to watch y'all destroy the county, my commissioner does nothing, totally nothing, to, to, to help the infrastructure of this county. The Dow, Lake Dow Dam, it was, you know, he said that thing when he was running for election. You elect me, you'll take care of it. They didn't even need him, but that helped got him elected. Everybody talks a good game when they're running. They'll meet with you. They'll talk to you. They'll do anything when they're running. But, after they're elected, they just flip, turn their back on you. Now, I've got just as much right to be here as anybody. And, you know, I'm gonna get up and I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to salvage this county. I'm gonna do everything in my power to keep it, keep it right and not have a car in every foot of the highway. So, you know, I think, I think that this is a, really a dysfunctional board, and you're the leader of a dysfunctional board, Ms. Wood. And you've, you've been asked by me to reclusive theirself a number of times, and you've never done it yet that I know of. Maybe once in three years. So, I think you should probably step down. I'd like to see you resign as chair, and let's get somebody here that can get something done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am a resident of McDonough. I am Ms. Shante Vornado. I'm a minister of the gospel. I'm, I'm here, I've heard all morning concerning the traffic, the retention pond, the neighborhoods. So, I, I'm glad that I heard it, like, all of that because that was my talk for today. I was very concerned about the traffic, about the retention ponds, the payments for the residents of, you know, of us paying taxes because we were told that the taxes would be lowered. In some cases, it wasn't. And then, it wasn't anything being issued or either sent out to us to let us know why these changes we're making. I'm also concerned about where I live, at off of 155 and everything in Henry County, concerning the subdivisions that require the cutting in the retention ponds and things like that. We were told that we'll have somebody to come out to do it. They very seldom don't come out. But, we, as the residents, go out and cut, and I would like to know who do we need to speak to about that, about these subdivisions that come up here and build these subdivisions and say that they are, have these things occupied in the subdivision, but it's not, it's not done. And that's my main concern, you know, with the traffic. And hopefully, we can get this traffic resolved around about or something around here because we have to leave two hours early to get to work and to come back. And then, if we just happen to be late, we just have to, you know, stay in the traffic. And, and I, I'm really looking for something to be resolved sooner than later. And thank you for hearing this out.
Thank you.
Good morning and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Board. My name is Kelly Rose. I live in the Ola area of District 3 in McDonough. I, there's a couple of things. I'm, I'm actually kind of disappointed this morning that along the, the same way the state is going, that our county is choosing to divide along party lines when there's so much more to be going on here. I, I was not born and raised in Henry County, but I, and that is not my fault, but I have chosen to raise my family here. But, what I, with that opportunity, being raised in a larger city, I have had the personal experience of seeing what an inland port will do to a community. I've also received recently Commissioner Woods propaganda for the port, and I was looking at what she states about it being, you know, financial opportunities and job offers. But, the reality is, if you haven't, there's plenty of cities that you can look at what happens to the community around that. You end up 15, 20 years from now, when my little kids are just going off to college, are, it'll be a depressed community. It will be a dirty community. It will be a community where people don't want to raise their families. It will be a community surrounding these port, this inland port with the traffic that, not just the traffic, people have touched on that. I'm talking about what the environment around that. You know, something that Henry County has, which is what I was drawn to, is the amazing soul of the county, which is the green space that we still have here. Now, once this green space is gone, let me be clear, it is gone. And you can look at any major city and major urban development and see that you cannot take that back. So, I was in full support of the temporary moratorium because we are not looking at the community and the legacy that we are leaving for this community once this board has retired, right? Once this board has moved on and gone to wherever the, the more, the warmer tropical places, right? There's still people of us who will be raising our children here that need to know that, if you look at Vernon, California, it is a destitute, broken area where the schools are abysmal and the crime is high because no one wants to live in their million-dollar homes around an inland port. So, okay, so that's one thing. And I also haven't heard, and I'd love to be, have some follow-up, if there's been any EIR executed on this, which is an environmental impact report, because I'd love to, to read or hear what has come up with that. You know, there, we have to look when we make these decisions, you know, immediate growth or immediate businesses. And by the way, I wholeheartedly, as a business owner in McDonough, disagree with the fact that a moratorium has to be put on everything. I think that is short-sighted. But, but again, that didn't pass, so that's fine. I just like to get that out there. But, we really need to look at what we're leaving for our other families and other people moving in here. And once that green space is gone, it is gone. And we will never be able to get that back. That, which brings me to the area I live in, which is District 3 in Ola. You know, I moved here. I moved my horses here. I've got my boots on, you know. But, but what I moved here for is because of the slow impact growth that had been happening. I have reached out to your office, Commissioner, and I believe I'm owed a call from Mr. Gibbs, based on the office, about creating and talking to you about creating a community land use, a, a land use committee that is, that is members of the community, that before a developer goes to planning and gets rubber stamped through planning, they are asked to meet with, and it could be elected or appointed, board of community members. That, that gives us the leverage and opportunity to ask for mitigations that these developers cannot be held to or feel that they can be held to once they've been stamped through planning. Because once they, I've seen it. I was here. My kids go to Ola. You know, once that's stamped through planning and it gets stamped through commission, the developers go, "Oh, thank you, hon," you know, but we're gone. So, what we could do as a community, instead of arguing on social media or anything else, is work with the commissioners, come up with people. I've been elected to these land use boards in other, in other communities where the developers are asked to meet with us, talk about our mitigations, hear what the community has to say, and then bring it to planning so that those mitigations and those concerns are addressed well before you have a full house here, you know? Because that's too late. And, and there's enough people that I've been talking to in this area because I'm here to stay. So, hi, you know, I'm here to stay. But, I want to work with you and work with the community on making sure that we can have that smart growth, right? Like, you're right. That smart growth that Commissioner Thomas said, like, we all talk about it. But, the, in order to do that, we need to have full participation between us, the community, and you, Commissioner. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay. I think that concludes our public comments, and we thank you each for your comments. So, at this time, we'll move to the approval of the minutes for the May 7th regular Board of Commissioners meeting and also May 14th and May 21st. So, at this time, we open the floor for a motion for the...
May 21st.
Okay. So, I'll remove that from my notes. So, thank you for that clarification. So, again, the May 7th and the May 24th meetings, which have been posted, we now open the floor for a motion for approval.
So, move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor. Okay. The minutes for May 7th and May 14th are approved. Okay. At this time, we'll just open the floor to any Commissioner comments. Any comments at this time? Okay. Seeing none. We'll now move to the county manager comments.
No comments this afternoon, Chair.
Okay. So, no county manager comments. The next item is that we basically have some upcoming meetings. On June 18th is our regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 6:30 PM. And then, we have a July 9th, 9 o'clock AM, regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Again, that date was moved due to the July 4th holiday. Regarding the executive session, I looked to our county attorney.
We do have some personnel matters to discuss.
We have some personnel matters. So, at this time, we'll call for a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion made.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor. Okay. We'll adjourn to the executive session. Are we ready, Stephen? I know we're waiting on Commissioner Warren, but we've got a majority. We've got a four. Okay, so at this time, we call for a motion to reconvene from executive session.
Motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor. Okay, I'll look to the county manager. Is there anything, oh, we need to approve the affidavit regarding the executive session, but did we have anything, county attorney, that we needed to vote for regarding resident?
No further action needed.
Okay, so now what we'll do, we'll accept a motion to approve the affidavit regarding the executive session.
Move to approve the affidavit for the executive session.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor. Okay, we now move to adjourn for the meeting. We call for a motion to adjourn.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, let's stand. Have a good one.